Good evening. I'm glad to see that nobody had anything better to do tonight. Good to see you here tonight for the April 25th meeting of the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I truly welcome everybody here. This is a great example of democracy in action. Tonight, we're gonna, first of all, I'm really pleased to introduce the Reverend Glenn Ray, who comes from my church community, Mount Bethel, to lead the invocation. And then, and also Commissioner Otch Church. And then tonight, we have a little bit something different. For the pledge, there was an incredible ceremony a week ago Friday for the opening of the, I'm sorry, it was on Sunday, Sunday for the Braves Weekend. There was an incredible ceremony there for both the Pledge of Allegiance and a truly outstanding young lady who sang the Pledge of Allegiance. So after... Is she here tonight? So we're gonna have Reverend Ray come up and lead us in the invocation. I'm glad to have you tonight, Glenn. And then we'll see this video of the Pledge of Allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner. So please rise.
Thank you for allowing me to, the honor of praying for you tonight. Let us pray. Our divine and gracious heavenly Father, we offer our thanks to you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our community and our nation. We come to you this evening not only to give thanks, but to ask for guidance, patience, understanding, and a spirit of cooperation as the commission goes about its work. The people of our county has entrusted these men and women to do the work of the community that affects the lives of every citizen of this great place in which we live. Father, we ask for your wisdom as they discuss and make decisions on the agenda that is before them. Lord, I pray for each commissioner individually, that you will protect and keep them. Thank you for calling them to this task, and may their purpose be for the good of all. Father, we also pray for our nation. Keep us in your care and safety. Bless us and give us generous hearts as we work at helping others and making our country a better place in which to live. We ask that you bless our officials both locally and nationally. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy today and help us never to take them for granted. Bless our service men and women across the world and keep them from harm. We pray for peace in our hearts and peace in our world. We offer our prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please direct your attention to the outfield as the Boy Scouts of America carry out our nation's banner. At this time, please stand and face the flag and join the Atlanta Braves in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Samir Joseph from Troop 1011.
Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Ladies and gentlemen, to honor America, please remove your caps and join in the singing of our national anthem performed by nine-year-old singer from Atlanta, Angelica Hale.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight All the round parts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rockets regaling The bombs blasting in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the Thank you very much.
I think we should go ahead on that high note and adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, really.
Just kidding, just kidding. All right, I'm gonna ask the board to consider a motion to amend the agenda to insert an appointment in here. And I'm gonna go ahead and get to the front on this late-breaking news because I know everyone's been waiting on this. Why not do it right up front here and start this meeting on the right foot? So I'm gonna ask for a member of the board to make a motion to insert in Tab 16, item number three, the agenda to recommend the interim appointment of County Manager Rob Hosack and the transition plan for County Manager Mr. David Hankerson.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call a question, and it passes five to zero. So it'll be inserted to Tab 16, item number three, for all of you. All right? And Pam, make sure I get to number three when we get to 16 about 3 o'clock this morning. Just hope that's a joke, too. Okay. Tab number one, we're gonna start with Tab four tonight, obviously. I'm sorry, Tab five, I apologize. And we have a number of presentations to make. And I'd like to start with Commissioner Cupid. Do you mind going first? Terrific, thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing some champions within our community from McKeachran High School. So if there's anyone here from the Women's McKeachran High School basketball team, I'd like to have you join me up here and your coaches. This presentation should be easy for me because I've been making it almost every year since I've been a commissioner. That's how many years that these young ladies have won the state championship. In fact, this year, they won their fourth title for the state, and yes, that's worthy of applause. I made the mistake one year of saying that they won the Class AA, A, 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 A championship. I learned next year to shorten that to the Class 6A championship. But I made the mistake in trying to hand out individual certificates to each of these young ladies. So what I'm going to do is read one. I'm getting better every year. Maybe next year, I'll do even better. I'm gonna read one certificate to the coach, and I'm gonna give her the honor of recognizing the young women here and also do something distinct. Usually, we just see your beautiful faces, but I would like for you all to share your experience because this is an awesome honor, particularly if any of you have been there the whole, oh man, come on. We know you have more going on off the court because some of you ladies are actually like top honor roll students. That's what I remember from being here as well. So they not only excel on the court, but in the classroom. And Chairman, don't hide behind there because I think it's fitting for our chair. They're just blocking the view. Okay. So this certificate goes to the coach, Ms. Phyllis Arthur. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on successfully serving as head coach of the girls' basketball team and leading them to the Class 6A championship. Under your superb guidance, the team has won state titles four years in a row and five out of the past six years. With a record of 26-6, the Lady Indians became the first girls' basketball team in almost 40 years to four-peat in the state's top classification. You were also named Girls' Coach of the Year for the state's top-three classification by the Atlanta Tip-Off Club. This is a testament to your expertise, leadership, and the difference you have made in all of your players' lives. We thank you for your many contributions to better our youth and community. Thank you so much for all of your effort. You're welcome. You're welcome. And I'm gonna read one certificate to the ladies, and in fact, I will have the coach distribute them to you after today. But again, I really want to hear from you because this is a remarkable accomplishment. So the certificates read, "The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you and the McKeachran High School basketball team on winning the Class 6A championship. Coming back from an early deficit against Norcross, your team was able to clinch its fourth straight state championship with a record of 26-6. The Lady Indians became the first girls' basketball team in almost 40 years to four-peat in the state's top classification. We are so proud of your team's commitment to excellence and wish you the best as you continue your academic and athletic career this 25th day of April." Thank you so much for your hard work. We also have an assistant coach here with us today, and thank you for all of your work with the team. So with that, I'm gonna give the coaches an opportunity to speak on your observations this year, and if there are any of you, I'd like to have each of you also state your name, and if any of you want to speak about your experience, I'd like for you to do that, too.
Good evening. First, Ms. Cupid, we gotta make one correction. It's 7A this year. Next year, she'll get it right when we come back. They moved us up another classification because of the size of the school, so we're like the top 50 schools in the highest division. These young ladies have done a lot of work. As you can see, we've got one that's still in knee brace. We lost three players during the season, a senior, starting senior, who's a center, our backup center, and our starting point guard, two season-ending injuries at the last of January 1st of February. And these young ladies still stood out and did what they had to do all the way across the board. And I did their GPA, and their overall GPA for the varsity is 3.4. The overall GPA for the JV team is 3.4, and the overall JV, ninth grade GPA is 3.2. So not only are they athletes, they're student athletes. So they, we have a great group, they're very well behaved, and I'm just happy to be their coach. They make me look good.
Hi, I'm Myra Camice. I'm David Hankerson's niece. I have the pleasure of coaching under this young lady. She inspires me every day to give my 100% and to be the absolute best coach that I can be to these young ladies that I call my family. We always have a saying, "In its family or in not given." And we work very hard for everything that we have earned this year. So congratulations to my team, especially congratulations to a world-renowned coach.
Okay, hello. Okay, hi, I'm Jewel Smalls. I'm in 11th grade. This is my first year playing at McKeachran High School. It was a great honor to be playing underneath Coach Arthur and playing with these girls that I'm standing with today and the ones that who couldn't have made it today. It was just a great experience to be in my first championship and to actually win it.
I'm Demaya McPherson. I'm a junior. Been on this team, taught everyone a lot, taught everybody how to be tough, you know, how to go through things later in life. So it was really a blessing to be on this team.
I'm Melissa Smith. I'm 11th grade. This is my third year on the varsity team, and just playing this year really taught you to like keep your head in it and to stay strong no matter what.
Hi, I'm Chanel Wilson. I'm in 11th grade. I've been on the team for three years, and I got hurt, but it was kind of a bittersweet taste because like it gave my other teammates a, yeah, opportunity to, you know, get a chance to make their light shine, so, yeah.
I'm Simone Oliver. I'm a senior, and I broke my ankle in January. So my season ended early as well, but my teammates stuck in there and kept their heads up the whole time. Our coaches motivated us the whole time, kept us in it, never gave up on us, and leaded us to a win.
Hi, I'm Cornicea Morrison, AKA Q, and I'm in the 12th grade, and I'm going to the University of Georgia. And this is my second year at McKeachran. And coming to this family, I knew I'd be in good hands upon the Coach Arthur, and it's been a great experience. It took blood, sweat, and tears to get the job done, and we kept our heads up and got it done.
Hey, my name is Daylin Craig, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Kyla Carpenter, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Wilby. I'm in 12th grade. I'm going to Texas Tech University. I was at McKeachran for three years, and Coach Arthur really taught me to take every practice as your last because you never know, and work hard every day and because you never know like when it's gonna end for you. So, yeah.
Honoring these ladies here tonight is not enough. There are some communities, they would have had a parade down the town square. I mean, this accomplishment is just remarkable. But the city of Powder Springs will be honoring them, I believe, Saturday, May 6th, at an outdoor event. So there's another opportunity for us to let your light shine in front of our whole community, and we appreciate you being a bright spot for us. I've heard that a number of you are juniors and also some of you are first-year students, so that means we expect you to come back next year for the fifth straight consecutive win, right? All right. We're gonna take a picture? Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, ladies. Best wishes to you. Thank you.
And Commissioner Cupid, you can stay right there, and I'll make the next announcement, all right? About what you're, just go and stay right there, all right? So now Commissioner Cupid is going to present a certificate to Drew Williams and Camille Mascareñas, I'm not joking, of Robot Ninjas. Amazing.
Yes, if you may join me, and any family members that you have with you, please join me. Now, we highlighted what is in our bright future for our teenagers within South Cobb, but I'm excited about this group that I have here with me today. I learned about them by seeing a newspaper clip on these two young people who are here in front of us. They had a remarkable, a remarkable accomplishment that makes me excited and gives me hope for my children. And I'm gonna read with you their accomplishment and why we should all be excited. "The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you, Drew, and also you, Camille, on winning first place for the state of Georgia and second place internationally in the six-to-eight-year-old age group of the 2017 Wonder League Robotics Competition." I'm so excited. Now, that already sounds impressive, but wait till you hear these numbers. More than 5,000 teams and 20,000 children completed a series of five missions by writing the code to navigate robots through a series of obstacles, and you two rose all the way to the top. That's amazing. We are extremely proud of both of you, your achievements that you made, and we wish you the best as you pursue your dreams. And Ms. Camille, this certificate is for you. We understand you want to be both a surgeon and a veterinarian, right? And Mr. Williams, we understand that you have a bright future as a robotics engineer, so we thank you and honor you tonight. Now, we're gonna take a picture soon, but I cannot highlight these young people without highlighting their family because it would not have been possible without their parents recognizing this opportunity and recognizing that their children could excel at this opportunity. I put a lot of emphasis on their parents because these children are homeschooled. And so for these, yes, we can clap for that. Some of us feel like we need an applause for sending our kids to school, let alone having to homeschool our children. But you've had to see that there was opportunity to push your children to participate in something like this at such a young age. So while I want to give your kids an opportunity to speak about how exciting it was, I want to give the parents an opportunity to speak about how you saw this opportunity and ended up pushing your children towards this. So Drew, would you like to share about your participation in the competition?
It was great. I really want to become a robotics engineer because there's lots of things you can make, and I want to make the world a better place.
Well, in the first place, I'm not homeschooled, I am King Springs.
Homeschool and King Springs. So I said correct. And you could see how her assertiveness did put her in the position to do what she just done.
So, why I want to be a surgeon, it's because I love helping people in all kinds of different ways.
Thank you, Camille. Well, what I did read a little bit, you could tell me more about the parent who saw this opportunity and how the other student became involved and just how you saw this as an opportunity for your children.
I saw it on Facebook. I, they, he got the present for Christmas, and I saw it on Facebook, and I thought it'd be right up his alley, and, you know, we've known each other for a number of years. And so Drew and Camille have known each other for a very long time as well, and so I just put the two together. They work well together, they really balance each other out, so.
Sometimes we get in fights. Sometimes, well, some, a little bit sometimes, we don't work well together and we don't have the same thoughts, but then we like get the problem into a solution, and then everything is okay.
And everything is certainly okay. So thank you, guys. Thank you, parents. Did you want to share anything about your children's participation?
Lisa, I want her to come up here.
I know, tell me about it. And that's for all of us tonight. With all the problems that we have, we are gonna find a solution, and in Cobb County, everything is gonna be okay, you know? So with that, why don't we huddle up and take a picture?
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Hey, Camille, my computer wouldn't unlock this morning. Could I get your cell number? I'm gonna have Commissioner Weatherford now to accept any kind of contribution from the Cobb County Master Gardeners.
Thank you, Chairman. I feel a little lost up here, not 6'4", and I don't know anything about robotics, but I think it just gets better and better. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation from our master gardeners and what they've done for the county. Before I call them up, let me ask, read a little information. "In 1980, University of Georgia Extension Service established the Master Gardener Program in Cobb County. Since then, a minimum of 50 volunteer hours is required during the first year and a minimum of 25 hours each year thereafter remain active. Currently, we have over 250 active master gardeners, many of those with a 10-year lifetime status. They have done many things for Cobb County."
And I'd like Hope Warren and Renee Lemon to come up and tell us a little bit more about it. Are they here? And then we'll call them up.
I'm Hope Warren. I'm the director at the University of Georgia Cobb County Cooperative Extension, and it is a program funded by Cobb County and the University of Georgia, and we work very well together. We have an organization or we have a group of volunteers called Master Gardener Volunteers that Renee Lemon is gonna tell you a little bit about in a second, but we have a couple of volunteers up here, but we have lots of them out there, so if y'all don't mind standing up. We have, we have a great group, and I'm gonna pass the mic to Renee because she is our Master Gardener Coordinator in our office, and she's the one that's actually gonna make the presentation, and she will acknowledge our agriculture agent as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Hope. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce Rolando Oriana. He is our A&amp;R Agent at Cobb Extension. And the beautiful green turf that you saw during the initial presentation, you can thank Rolando for that because he had a big part in the the initial presentation, you can thank Rolando for that, because he had a big part in the turf at the new stadium. So we're real proud of him for that. So I'm the Coordinator for the Cobb County Master Gardeners. We are here this week because it is National Volunteer Week, and that's what we are. The Cobb County Master Gardeners have been around since 1980. This is a group of very dedicated volunteers who, when they sign up to become a master gardener, they're signing up to be an educator. UGA Extension trains them so they can go out and share their knowledge with their community. In 2016, the Cobb Master Gardeners volunteered 20,967 hours, which comes up to $23.54 an hour, and they volunteered 75,515 miles, which is 56 cents a mile. And when you do all that math, it comes up to a whopping $530,889 is what the Cobb County Master Gardeners in-kind gave to Cobb County in 2016. So this evening, I just want to brag a little bit about the master gardeners and let the commissioners know how lucky I feel and how lucky I hope you feel to have these people in our community, going out and teaching in our schools, and at garden clubs, at senior centers, we're all over the place. So I want to present this check of our in-kind dollars to the commissioners for our work And I would like to introduce, who's up here with me tonight are Susan Dossie, Joanne Newman. We are... These are two members of our board, the Master Gardener Volunteers of Cobb County. Yes, so we train every January, February, and March with the metro counties, and you can go to our website, either the Extension website or cobmastergardeners.com, and you will be able to find the application if you're interested in becoming a master gardener. Every few years, we do two trainings. We just got finished doing the January, February, March, and there's a special lady that just got finished with the training. I think some of our commissioners may... Love one of our new master gardeners, Judy Boyce, who made 101 on her final exam. You have to study really, really hard. 101, we have five bonus questions. But this summer, we are also training, because we're putting teachers, Cobb County teachers, through. So we are helping 54 schools right now, and we've given them grant money, and we've helped them build raised beds, but now we need teachers to be master gardeners, because knowledge is power. So we've got 18 Cobb County teachers that will be going through the training this summer. Yes, and the commissioners are... I gave you a little pamphlet about our 2016. Yes, and in there, you will see two free complimentary tickets to our garden tour. And for those that would like to join us on our garden tour, it is Mother's Day weekend, May the 13th, and you can get tickets online on our website, cobmastergardeners.com. Thank you.
Let's have all the master gardeners stand up one more time, and let's give them a round of applause back there. Thank you for all you've done. Anybody else do better than 101? I just want... Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Okay, Commissioner Weatherford, you can stay down there, and our next event on the program is to recognize Vaughn Williams from the Kennesaw State University.
Vaughn just got all sorts of problems.
Vaughn? I know you're out there somewhere.
It gets better and better, and I keep dropping things, sorry. Mr. Vaughn Williams, come on up, sir. Many of you may not know, or you should know who Vaughn Williams is. He's the Athletic Director at Kennesaw State University, and we're here to honor him tonight, and I'd like to read a proclamation in his honor. Kennesaw State University Director of Athletics Vaughn Williams was recently honored as the Athletics Director of the Year by the National Association of Collegiate of Directors of Athletics. Pretty impressive. This award highlights the efforts of athletics directors at all levels for their commitment and positive contributions to student athletes, campuses, and their surrounding communities. And whereas Williams is leading a transformation at KSU since his arrival in May 2011, he has formed the KSU Athletics Association, oversees a rebranding of the Department of Athletics, and included new athletic marks, signed a partnership with the Diaz to be the official apparel provider of the Owls, and added women's lacrosse and football in the university's 17th and 18th intercollegiate sports. And a signature moment during Williams' tenure came in the fall of 2015 with the launch of a Division I football program, which we're all very proud of. The Owls have won 14 games, been ranked in the top 25, and sold out all home games over the program's first two seasons. Williams has brought in several impressive coaches, including Brian Bohannon as a head football coach, Al Skinner as a men's basketball coach, and Agnes Berentow as women's basketball head coach.
Baranato.
Baranato. What you said. Williams' tenure has also seen the Owls capture 17 conference championships and make 19 appearances in NCAA postseason play. Putting an emphasis on the development of the total student athlete, his team launched Owl's Championship Initiative. This program invests in the lives of student athletes academically, athletically, mentally, vocationally, and spiritually. His team has also cultivated relationships with the business community and fostered long-term sponsorship agreements, generating millions of dollars in revenue. Now, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Vaughn Williams for being named Athletic Director of the Year by the NA-CDA. We are proud of you, and you continue to enrich Kennesaw State, community, and Cobb County, so thank you for your commitment to excellence and student achievement this 25th day of April 2017. And I believe, I'll let you say a few words, and I believe you have some people in the audience that may want to come up here. They don't? Aiden, Lacey, and Eileen, did I get it right? Well, why don't you at least stand up? His family's here somewhere. All right. I see one, two, three. All right.
Well, I just want to thank Cobb County, and thank you, Commissioner, and Chairman, everybody. You can't do what I do without a community, what you're seeing, the young people we just visited, robotics and everything, a high school basketball team, probably need some of those players on my team, but... Yeah, yeah, but what we're about is impacting lives, and when you get an opportunity to impact lives, that's what we do at Kennesaw State. So it's pouring into lives, creating the leaders of tomorrow, and hopefully, everybody in this community is proud. This is an unbelievable community. There's no place like it in America. I've been a lot of places. We just need to continue to do the great work we're doing. So thank you, respect the privilege, we always say, and it's an honor and a privilege to serve this community and Kennesaw State.
I have to say a few words. Vaughn is a shining example of an athletic director in a community, his character in the community, and he has done a phenomenal job at KSU with the inaugural year of football two years ago, the past two years, a winning record. Congratulations on your accomplishments, and the ladies' basketball team as well. And I'm surprised you didn't recruit... All I heard was UGA and Texas Tech. What happened? You need to get some of those lady Owls, those McKeachran girls, to be lady Owls. So you go talk to them afterwards. But thanks for all you do. It's an honor to serve with you on the football committee and the things going on at KSU, and we're here for you, to support you, and we appreciate you and all you do.
Yeah, thank you, Vaughn, and one last thing that, above all the honors and things that you get, I am most proud that I can call you my friend, and we've been that way and continue to be that way, sir. I look forward to our breakfasts. Yes, sir. Let's give another round of applause, thank you.
Okay, if I could have the commissioners join me down front, and Mr. Hankerson, if you'd join us, please.
We're going to do something a little bit different here. We're going to honor Mr. Hankerson tonight. As you know, he's retiring at the end of this month, and I'm going to have Pam maybe read the whereas's and the therefor's. It's a little long, but I think that, given his 24 years of service as county manager, more than 30 years of dedication to this county, we can be a little patient to hear the incredible achievements of this incredible young man.
Whereas David Hankerson grew up in Burke County, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in agronomy from Ford Valley State College, and a Juris Doctorate from the Woodrow Wilson College of Law. He served our country bravely in the US Army from 1967 to 1970, and moved to Cobb County in 1973, where he and his wife Janet raised four children. And whereas Hankerson began his illustrious career with Cobb County Government in 1984, serving in many leadership capacities before being appointed as county manager on February 1st, 1993, assuming responsibility for the supervision of all county affairs and implementation of policies established by the Board of Commissioners. Whereas, under Hankerson's outstanding and consistent management, our county continues to serve as a leader for the state, region, and nation, as evidenced by our AAA national bond ratings and the successful opening of SunTrust Park and The Battery. And whereas, he is a certified public manager, leadership Cobb alumnus, a graduate of the Regional Leadership Institute, and a member of the Association, County Commissioners of Georgia, General Government, and Natural Resources and Environmental Policy Committees. Hankerson has served on many civic and service boards, including the Cobb County YMCA Board of Directors, Tommy Nobis Center, Shorter College Board of Visitors, and the Southern Polytechnic State University Foundation Board. And whereas Hankerson is one of five distinguished Georgians to receive an Excellence in Public Service Award for 2004 from the Carl Binstone Institute of Government at the University of Georgia in partnership with Georgia Trend Magazine. And whereas, he has earned countless other awards, including the Cobb County Management Award, the Dr. Carter C. Woodson Freedom Award, the NAACP Citizenship Award, and the Cobb Chamber of Commerce Mac Henderson Award for Outstanding Community and Public Service, the Citizen of the Year by the Marietta Daily Journal, and the Man of the Year by the Cobb Chronicle. And whereas, in 2009, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners bestowed the honor of naming the Cobb County Safety Village education building after Hankerson. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do sincerely thank Mr. David Hankerson for his unwavering commitment and strong leadership on behalf of all Cobb residents. His intelligence, professionalism, integrity, work ethic, and dedication to county employees has greatly benefited our community over the past 33 years and for decades to come. We wish him all the best in retirement. This the 25th day of April 2017.
May I be the first to begin this long procession of accolades that will be marked this week? And it is with deep respect and great humility that I award you and present you this proclamation on behalf of the county, and we all know in our hearts that you're never going to retire. And I know the board members want to all say something here.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson, for your many, many years of service, but also for your confidence and trust in all of us, and your mentorship, and just being a faithful servant to this board and to this county. We couldn't be here without you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you've done. We've probably spent more time together in the last three months than we did the last nine years, and I think as a team, we worked really well together, and I just want to thank you for all the hard work and effort, and made Cobb County shine on April 14th. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm probably the newest one up here. Be nice. Okay, that's not what you said the other day. I've known Mr. Hankerson for many years, both at the City Council in Acworth, where he had the utmost respect of the municipalities in Cobb, because Mr. Hankerson believed that we're one county. If you live in a city, you live in the county, we work together, and we became friends and cohorts there, and when I was fortunate enough to come here, he and I have continued to be friends, and I've learned a lot from him, and I appreciate all your dedication to services county, and all its citizens, and it's truly an honor to call you a friend too, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your friend.
Thank you. County Manager, while Commissioner Weatherford may be the newest, I can attest that I am the youngest. And I'm going to share why. I'm going to share why, just not to rub anything in, but while I am the youngest, I do recognize that there is a work ethic that is associated with those who've been working and living on this earth a little bit longer than I have, that is observable and well exemplified through David, and much appreciated, and it's something that is also unparalleled. There is a difference when a lot of people my age go into a profession that, you know, sometimes they don't expect for you to be there more than two years, and you've been with the county for how long?
A little over 32 years as a county manager.
Over 32? That's a very long time. It's something that, again, I think is reflective upon the age and era which our county manager has stepped into the county, but I think for him to stay here in the county, to keep him here, and particularly for him to be in his role for as long, is a testament to him individually and his character and his contribution. I've been here for about four and a half years now, and I know that I cannot really attest to all that you've done. There are a lot of things that I haven't seen, but I can tell you, from what I have seen, I am greatly appreciative of the relationship that we've developed. I appreciate you being a resource, I appreciate you being a confidant, and I appreciate you being an encourager, and I wish you the best of success in everything that you do and will continue to do in serving, because I know a servant's heart is what you have, and it's what you will always be, and I know that whoever you touch beyond your life here at Cobb County will be as encouraged and as appreciative as I've been. So thank you, David, really appreciate you.
Let me have my department heads come up. I'm going to tell you, every department head, agency head, please come up and stand with me, please. Yeah. Let me say as they come up... Let me say as they come forward, I, 1984, I had the opportunity or request to make a career-changing decision. It was the toughest decision I ever had to make in my life, to leave a job that I love. Most of you know that my background, I was involved with the creation of the Master Garden as I was on the Georgia Agriculture and Environmental Science Advisory Board for a number of years at UGA. And love outdoors, but when I was recruited to come to Cobb, that was tough. But as I reflect back on all the great things that's happened in Cobb in our 32-plus years and my 24 years as plus as county manager, it's the best career decision I've ever made in my life. The second hardest decision was making the decision to retire, because it's a county I love. I love serving the citizens of this county. I've always, in my entire career, had a great team that make me look good every day, to enjoy serving the citizens, serving the community, getting involved with nonprofits, and giving back. That is my heart, as Commissioner Kiba talked about. I tell you, this community welcomed me in open arms in 1973, and I can't remember having one bad day, because it's all about giving, it's all about serving. And I want to thank the Board of Commissioners and every Board of Commissioner that I've worked for many, that gave me the opportunity to serve our citizens of Cobb County and to stay here this long. And I want to thank my department heads for making me look good every day. You've always had my back. I've always felt I worked for Commissioners that had my back. I can't think of a better county that I would have rather worked for. I can tell you, I'm not gonna go to the pasture yet, but I will not manage another county. But not that I had any bad experiences. You know, I love Cobb, and I just don't want to take on that task, because I probably will cry every day and want to come back to Cobb every day. But that's what it's about. That's our team effort. And I want to say, every Board of Commissioner I ever worked for befriended me, respected me, dealt with me in tough times, even with critics, but you know, that's part of it. I don't say anything negative about anybody. And it comes with age, I guess. But thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I said to the chair, I didn't see this one coming, I said to the chair a few minutes ago, I thought I was supposed to be a part of agendas, and he said, "You did." But, because he knows I don't like surprises, but that's, especially when it comes to me, because I do enjoy what I do. I have not had one day in my life that I regret getting up, coming to work. I wake up every morning, I wake up every morning between 4:00 and 5:00, getting ready to come to work, and because I enjoy coming to work. And I want to thank each and every one, the citizens of this county, the Commissioners and staff, all of our staff, because I'm your biggest cheerleader. And again, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
We're gonna get a photo op here for everybody. We're gonna somehow make everybody get together here.
I bulldozed my way through the chairman. Thank you, Chairman Boyce. He said he would give me one minute, because he knew I was gonna take two. This man here have made Cobb County the place it is today. David, we want to thank you for making it a better county. There has been times when I know the burden have been heavy, but you've carried it. One of the things that, several years ago, when you came to the Cobb NAACP, because the Martin Luther King Celebration, which we had been having every year, was going to be defunct, David asked us, will you take it up? David, Judy, and all of the staff in Cobb County have made the Martin Luther King Celebration here in Cobb County one of the best. One of the best in the metro area. Not only that you help us do that, you have helped us do the job that we have did here in Cobb County. When we talk about equality and justice and everything, you've listened, you have gave us the opportunity to be who we are here in Cobb County. Because to work with each and every one of the Commissioners, you to us have been fair, your integrity, who you are, who you are, we love you, we respect you, and Cobb County's loss is you. We wish you well in whatever you're doing and your future endeavors. And just from the bottom of our hearts, we, our meeting is tonight so that our members are not here, but I came over here because I knew that Chairman Boyce would let me speak, so I'm here. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, for being the county manager here in Cobb County. And as I started, you truly have made Cobb County a better place. And we're, on a personal note, I am so pleased to have known and shared, shared some of the things that have made Cobb the place that we have today. Thank you.
Let me say, this is one of the organizations I've supported. And I did say to Mr. Vaughn, unless partnership with, I mean, the Martin Luther King Day Celebration, but you know, everyone professionally or personally have to have someone in their life to keep them grounded. And Deanne Vaughn is one of those that keep me grounded. She give me accolades, she's my worst critic, and she make no apologies for it. But it made me a better person as well, because you got to have someone that can be brutally honest with you at all times. And it was always for the better interest of this community. It was never, ever personally. And I want to thank you for that, because we all need that in our life. Thank you.
All right, no more surprises. Well, I thank everybody for your patience and recognizing some incredible, incredible achievers in Cobb County. As you can tell, this is a great county, and tonight you saw a very small spectrum of what that represents. And we're really proud, this board's really proud, to be your elected officials. So with that, we'll now go on to tab number six, right? And we have an update on SunTrust. What we're gonna do tonight is, because Mr. Hankerson was a county representative with the Braves, designated county representatives, and then Commissioner Ott worked the advisory committee, I'm gonna have them do a joint presentation, so we really see why everything worked so well on the opening home stand of the Braves. So with that, Mr. Hankerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was the home opener on Friday, April 14th, and the management team of the Braves presented to Commissioners and I with a jersey. But it was the goal line, and it was one where we had issued the CO, and that's what we had hoped to accomplish, and that's the significance of this slide, that we had said, they had said, "We'll be ready on April 14th." And as Cobb County and this team, as always, our staff, our fire marshal, our attorneys, our DOT, our IAS, our transportation, the full team worked together, because we knew this day was coming. And we pulled it off as a team with Commissioner Ott and the rest of the Board of Commissioners. And I want to just say thank you to them. Let's give them a big round of applause. And on April 14th, the team, the Braves team, Chairman Boyce and Commissioner Ott walked over to our 285 pedestrian bridge for the first time. It's one that was another milestone, and we wanted to make sure, I think the chairman wanted to make sure the bridge would be open, safe for pedestrians. I did join them in that group. I didn't make the walk across. Might have been a little tough with me, Mr. Chairman, but I did join you at the finish line. And so here they are going back across the bridge on that particular day. We've got some fun facts here for you. Over 5.6 million hours, man-hours on the stadium, 57,312 cubic yards of concrete, 4,770 truckloads of concrete, 5,640 tons of rebar, which is approximately weight of 800 African elephants. I don't know who came up with that comparison, but I trust whoever gave me that fact done the research. We had 6,800 tons of structured steel, which is probably the weight of 107 tractor trailers. Now, I can identify with that. 33,201, 65 pounds of structured precast, which is approximately weight of 190 C-140 jets. I know where that came from. It wasn't you, I was gonna blame you for it.
That was from the Braves.
Okay.
But that's a lot.
Okay. 231, 809 feet of nearly 44 miles of pipe, I can identify with that. 602,000 handset bricks, which would stretch seven to six miles, laid end to end. The first games, these sold-out crowd early to see the opening ceremonies. The unveil the Braves legend, Hank Aaron, got a massive welcome from attendees. And that was quite an honor to see him get that as well. The team coming on the field for the first time, that was quite another celebration. The first of Friday night fireworks was enjoyed by all of us that participated in that as well. Friday night's fireworks there. The home opener, just a quick update from public safety, 14 calls during the home opener, suspicious personnel items, SCAPR calls, a vehicle unlocked, two intoxicated persons, locked gates at parking garage, one complaint of parking blocking in an apartment entrance. I tell you, with 41,000 tickets, that is a low, low statistic there. Department of Transportation, they had one summarized statement for me. Despite earlier fears, traffic and pedestrian flow well. Average trip time for the park goes with 30 minutes.
Armageddon did not happen?
Not as it was predicted. Home opener, fire marshal, 1,800 inspections over more than two years. February 24th, 2017, certificate of occupancy was issued. Ongoing, the fire marshal's office is present at every game and continue to work with SunTrust Park to make sure that the ticket holders and other visitors are safe, and they're constantly evaluating and trying to find ways to improve.
Mr. Hankerson, and I want to commend you, just so everybody knows, not once, not once did the Braves ever call me and ask for a favor for any certificate or permit. And that's because they knew that Mr. Hankerson could take care of it. So I think that says a lot about our partnership, but more importantly, it says a lot about how Mr. Hankerson gets things done. So I want to commend you for that incredible achievement, Mr. Hankerson.
One caveat to that, Mr. Chair, we had a great team. We had a team that was unbelievable. That is part of what make my decision easier, we got a great team here, as you have constantly pointed out. Seven-game opening series, fun facts. 215,394 fans, an average of 30,771 per game. First two games, new sell-out crowds of 41,499, attendance increased by an average of 5,261 fans per game from last season, first seven games at Turner Field. 16 homeruns were hit in SunTrust's first seven game, an average of 2.29 per game. My partner in working through some of the issues at the stadium, Commissioner Ott stated that we worked a lot, I think we worked a lot over the last eight or 10 years. But I tell you, we spent more time, we talked sometime daily, three times daily, seven days a week, at night, whenever, to make sure that even the businesses and the stadium and everything else. So Commissioner Ott worked with me, through me, and I knew everything that was going on in the stadium as a county rep, Commissioner Ott.
And I can't emphasize enough, I mean, as county manager said, it was teamwork, not just the two of us, I mean, the county staff. You have no idea, you saw a lot of numbers out there, and you saw how many inspections the fire marshal did, regular building inspectors, health department, I mean, the number of inspections that took place just on the stadium to get it open, I mean, it really showed the teamwork. And for those of you, when you go to a game, that 41,149, if the stadium is full and they have the guy up there moving the numbers around to see how many people are there, just remember that number, because that's how you win the prize. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show you what was built here in Cobb County and how it all came together and worked. And you can't emphasize the fact that the traffic has never materialized. This is, yes, no, we had two full days. Okay, so this is the Sunday game that you saw when we opened the meeting tonight, the unfurling of the flag. This is that game. Next slide. Just more pictures of that. And if you look, you're looking out of the stadium and down into The Battery. Next slide. Some more close-up views, that's Circle 75. Just if you haven't been out there, gives you an idea of where everything's located. Nope, repeat, another one. Next slide. All right, this is looking down towards the Chop House Gate. This is where there'll be a wine bar on the left, and just a little bit further down is Yard House. And you have some other shops coming over the next 30, 60, 90 days, the rest of the shops in The Battery are gonna open. Another view of that. This is really important. So here you are in the middle of the Cumberland area, and already we have people riding bicycles to The Battery and to the game. I just, you know, when I saw that, and it was families with kids. Just to the right of the parking deck you see there, there is actually a bicycle station that has lockers for your helmets, and it has like pumps and things like that if you need to make repairs on your bicycle. There's the families. Next slide. This is the flag, you saw it unfurled in the video in the beginning of the meeting. The flag weighs 1,100 pounds and it's the size of a football field. It took 170 scouts and leaders to unfurl the flag that Sunday. That gives you an idea, you can see the little people at the end. This is the Mizuno Experience. There is an area to check, to try out their track shoes, there's also an area to try out their bats, and then there is an area, they actually sew mitts in this shop. And then if you take your son, your daughter, your grandchild to a game and you forget to bring a mitt, there is two stations outside the foul poles that you can sign out a mitt, and they can use it during the game. This is another shot of the bridge, this is looking from The Battery. And this is just to give you an idea of how clean and well-kept everything is. This is the walkway through the red parking deck on the bridge and then going into The Battery. A nighttime... A nighttime shot of the Battery. Remember, keep in mind that even when the Braves are not there, the Battery is open 365 days a year. There's music playing, there's restaurants. It's a very comfortable, safe place to be at night, and since everything's been open, there's people there every day and every night. I thought this was really unique. I just happened to come across it, and we never really talked about it. There is a single seat over by the first base foul pole that, as you can see here with the plaque, is reserved in recognition of POWs. Next slide.
Thank you, Commissioner Ott. And that concludes our presentation. But, Mr. Chairman, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of my staff from the beginning with the contract to inspections, working through everything that we had to do to reach the April 14th date. And I just can't say the number of hours, and when we look at the number of people involved throughout our organization, I just want to publicly thank the entire team. Yes, I may have been the lead of that team, but I can tell you, the real work was done by the team members. And I just want to publicly say, thank everybody that's involved in whatever fraction of making it to the April 14th date. And certainly want to thank the board of commissioners. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson, and better words are never spoken. Thank you very much. And thank you also, Commissioner Ott. I believe we're going on to tab seven now, and we're conducting a public hearing. Mr. Wilkis? I believe you're the first one up on the podium.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. The purpose of this item is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Mitchell Road located in Land Lot 692 of the 16th District, Second Section, Cobb County. Mitchell Road, located in Commission District 2, is classified as a local street. The right-of-way for this portion of Mitchell Road adjacent to the JEN Georgia property is required to allow full utilization of the property purchased by JEN Georgia. Therefore, JEN Georgia and other abutting property owners have requested the county close and abandon this portion of the public right-of-way on Mitchell Road, as this section no longer serves a public purpose. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Mitchell Road, determine that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purpose, and authorize the disposition of the same by quick claim deed to the adjoining property owners, Jen Georgia 6 LLC, William E. Jett, Kathleen B. Kill, Michael D. and Margaret P. Kringle, and Charles R. Jr. and Marsha B. Neal.
I want to remind everybody that at these public hearings, you have three minutes to address the board. And since we have a full schedule, and I'm going to already hold everybody to that three minutes. So with that, I declare this public hearing now open. Does anyone wish to address, to podium to address this issue? Is there anyone that wishes to come to the podium to address this issue? See none? I now declare this public hearing closed? Oh, you have a comment. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Please, come on up. That's fine, no problem. I didn't quite get out closed, we're okay.
Okay. I'm deafened, so I hope my voice is okay.
You're fine.
All right. Well, I am in support of the adjacent property owners being able to receive this property. I would recommend that something be offered to the county in return for this property. If something is obviously not being put into use, perhaps the adjacent property owners could put it to their own personal use and possibly conservation. So I would recommend that in return for something being supplied to the county, such as monetary funds, that this unused property should be disposed, indeed, to the adjacent property owners. If somebody comes in outside of the adjacent properties to take this property, to buy it, they could put it to some other use that would not be appropriate for the county or for those property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
This action is a result of a zoning that happened when it was in District 3, and this is through the hard work of Commissioner Burrow, working with the property owners and the developer. And as a result of a rezoning that was approved by the county, the road basically serves no purpose, because all those names that you heard are the people that were on that road, but they're all selling their property. And so that the road, it would just become a remnant that the county would have to deal with. And so what the county's getting out of it is the not having to spend the preventive maintenance down the road.
Would anybody else like to approach the board, approach the podium and address the board on this issue? Okay, now I firstly call this public hearing to a close. And Commissioner Ott?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the abandonment of a portion of Mitchell Road located in Land Lot 692 of the 16th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, as depicted in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we're going to tab number eight now. And for those of you who don't have an agenda, we're going to conduct a public hearing on the employment of consultant services for IS here, Information Services. So Sharon, you have the podium?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Good evening, I guess I should say. Information Services requests the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to employment of consultant services for the GIS Big Data Project, where contract fees will likely exceed $100,000. The GIS Big Data Project will allow integration and analysis of large volumes of data from the multiple sources such as WAVEs and automatic vehicle locators with Cobb County's Enterprise Geographic Information System. The notice of the public hearing for this project was advertised in the Maryland Daily Journal on April 7th, 14th, and 21st.
Okay, so do me a favor.
Yes, sir.
I'm a layman. Explain to me what you just said.
Okay. So we have a, as most of you are aware, and many of the citizens, we have a very robust geographic information system in the county used by many of the businesses and all of the citizens. Big data is data which normally exceeds the general capacity of our servers, our processors, et cetera. Big data would be, for example, if we received all the data from WAVEs. As you're aware, we currently provide data to WAVEs for the Braves directions and for other areas in the county, so that the citizens can use WAVEs and get information. This will allow us, the agreement also provided that data coming to us. We can't use it because it's such a huge volume of data. So this will allow our geographic information system to enter a new world of analytics, analyzing big data.
Thank you. So with that explanation, I now declare this public hearing now open on this proposal. Does anyone wish to address the board on this issue? Again, does anyone wish to address the board on this issue of GIS and big data? I see none. I now declare this public hearing to a close, and-
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ott, I guess, you have it again.
Yes, one more time. And I think one of the things pointing about this, and as the citizens will see, IS is working on creating a dashboard application that all this data is going to be available to you in a dashboard format. And so part of the reason we really want to do this is it's to make the data available to the public. So motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? And I call a question. And it passes five to zero. Thank you, Sharon. I believe we'll now go to tab number nine, and Dana Johnson, Community Development, is first up on the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here to present three agenda items to you, all of which require public hearing, sir. Agenda item number one is to conduct a public hearing to, and possibly consider the approval of a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate for a pool at a single-family residence located at 711 Burning Tree Drive. Just as a bit of background, this is required by 1973 law approved by the Georgia General Assembly called the Metropolitan Rivers Protection Act. This requires that all land disturbing activities within 2,000 feet of the Chattahoochee River shall be required to obtain this particular certificate prior to the commencement of any construction activity. The Atlanta Regional Commission does review all of these prior to the approval by the local governing authority, and they have signed off and said this isn't in compliance with the particular act. This is a sight map showing the location of 711 Burning Tree Drive, so you can see the general area and its proximity to the Chattahoochee River. And with that, sir, I would ask you to please open the public hearing in regard to the granting of the certificate. Then I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have and ask the board to please consider granting the certificate.
Okay. With that, I now declare this public hearing open on this issue to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate. Does anyone wish to approach the board to discuss this issue? Does anyone wish to approach the board to discuss this issue about the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate? See none? I declare this public hearing to close. And I think this is Commissioner Ott again, right?
It is. We've seen a couple of these over the last couple of months. This one's a little bit different in that it's just for a pool. The house already exists. So I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for construction of a pool at a single-family residence at 711 Burning Tree Drive.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And I call a question. And it passes five to zero. Number two.
Yes, sir. Item number two is to conduct a third public hearing to solicit comments and input on changes to Chapter 10, the animals section of Cobb County Code. The Board of Commissioners has already conducted two public hearings on this particular code in February and March. At the March public hearing, the board had requested some additional revisions for this to come back for final consideration. This particular code deals with regulations regarding the tethering of animals, and this particular code, as it is written currently, it basically only allows the tethering of animals when it is in the direct supervision of the animal's owner. So it is only a temporary condition when they are with the owner, is what this would authorize. And with that, sir, I would ask you to please consider opening this public hearing, and then considering the changes to the particular ordinance, sir.
Okay. So everyone who wants to talk about this, you just sort of stand up so I get a head count here. Okay, that's fine, I just want to get an idea of, that's fine, no, really, you're all going to get your chance to address the board, that's no problem, I just want to get an idea. So with that, well, here's what I'll do. I'm going to declare this public hearing open. You all get three minutes, and what I'll do is just, you know, we'll just find a way to informally come up one at a time. I don't want you all to stand. We'll be here probably 30 to 45 minutes with the public hearing, and I don't want you to wear yourself out. Plus, more importantly, if you stand, people behind you can't see what's going on up here. So we'll just work our way from the front to the back, and I'll assure you that everybody will get their three minutes, okay? So whoever wants to come to the podium first, I declare this public hearing now open. Please, come to the podium, let me know what your name is and where you live, and then please give your statement.
Hey, my name is Chris Benson. I live in West Cobb in the Du West area. Having reviewed the proposed language that is in the most recent version of the draft amendment, Package 2 of the revised draft code amendments, I just want to urge the board to pass this code. I think it is a vast improvement over the ordinances that we have had for so many years now. And as a lifelong citizen of Cobb County, I'm just terribly pleased to see that we're making progress, we're moving in the right direction. I think it's a big plus for our community and for the animals that we all love and have, and I will yield back the rest of my time. Thank you very much, I hope you look for this.
Thank you very much. Again, I ask you to sit down, and I'll call you. It's just really hard for people in the back to see, be in. No, no, not you, lady. I'm sorry, I apologize. No, please, don't sit down.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
No, no, there were people standing in the aisle. I just wanted to make sure they could all see you.
Okay, all right. My name is Amy Barnes, and I'm a resident of Marietta. And I am against the change in the law, as is stance. Now, my reasoning behind what I have to say as a position is that the language in the proposal is unconstitutionally fake, okay? When you say attended to by an owner, does that mean that owner has to stand there in front of the dog? And the reason why I ask this is because the majority of people who do tether, and people that I know who do tether, do so because they're spraying for fleas inside the house. They are running this terrifying monster called a vacuum that the dog may attack. And so they can't necessarily stand out there with the dog, or even assign somebody to stand out there with the dog while they're inside vacuuming, while they're inside with things like bleach that a dog may get into. So there are very valid safety reasons why somebody would want to tether. So the language "attended to by the owner," I don't think is constitutionally valid, because it could be interpreted in two separate ways. You have "attended to," meaning the owner's on site, but you also have "attended to," meaning that the owner has to be there, standing literally by the dog. I think this goes in the way of strippage of supervision rights or lack thereof of the owner. I think that making a person physically stand with the dog while it is tethered flies in the face of the very reason of tethering. Many people work at a home offices. They put their dog right out there for 15 minutes, and they take the dog back. As far as the arguments in favor of a ban on tethering is already addressed by this existing law. We already have laws that cover abusive animals. We already have laws that say you have to provide food and water to a dog. We have laws that address, the existing code already addresses, temperature requirements. And animal control officers who disregard complaints about temperature, such as a neighbor's dog being outside in 20 degrees, ought to be reeducated, because that is cruelty, to put a short-haired dog outside in 20 degrees. I think the tethering law needs to be amended. The proposal needs to be amended, because people do have extremely valid reasons for tethering, and this would affect parents, this would affect primarily the poor, primarily people who cannot afford to pay somebody to stand outside with their dog while they are cleaning, while they are addressing pest requirements, pest control requirements. In order to flea-bomb a house, you have to tether the dog.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. That's your time.
Thank you.
Well, hey, Chairman and Commissioners. So tonight's going to be a really good night for Cobb County's animals and people who love the animals. I feel it.
Mary, Mary? I know who you are. I love you like a daughter.
Mary Kirkendall, District 2.
Hallelujah.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
So anyway, nevertheless, it's going to be a great night, night to celebrate. Some things need to be addressed. We appreciate that you have given us a no unsupervised tethering ordinance. We also appreciate that you took that from Athens Clark County, and I believe Douglas County. I presented Gwinnett Counties several times, and I just want you guys, once we get this passed, hopefully, we can go back into and see how things are running and adopt a little more stringent or detailed codes that include the shelter requirements. Because what would really address some of these, I think the unintended consequences that I believe animal control is worried about, as well as you guys, is dogs that jump fences is why some people tie their dogs out. But we've got to start working with the groups, the coalitions that help build these fences, and that's what these pictures are showing. There's a group out of Durham, North Carolina called Coalition to Unchain Dogs. They build a fence, about three or four fences a week, and unchain the dogs. There's a new group that just started, and I want to give props to Jennifer Summers. She helped form the Gwinnett County tethering law. And she has now started Unchain USA, Coalition to Unchain USA. She's, you can find her on Facebook. They work only off donations, but they will be working- They work only off donations, but they will be working with our area, North Georgia, Atlanta. So that's who we need to work with and support because people that can't afford to do anything with their dog, unfortunately, they shouldn't have a dog, great. But the situations are going to arise, and if we can start supporting these groups that are building the pens, the outdoor pens, that will solve a lot of the issues. And... But there's just a few other things that I think over time...
Speak fast.
...we'll work on.
Thank you so much for everything that y'all have done so far. We really, really appreciate it, and we just hope that we can all get together on the same page with the animals and make it a much better place, much better county, you know? Remember, this is still the first step. Yes, I agree.
And the other good news is that there's still no tethering, even in an enclosed area.
And that's fantastic. That's absolutely fantastic.
This is, there is no, you know, it's unsupervised. Tethering is forbidden.
Thank you so much.
So it's a first step.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And we're looking forward to working with your groups. You know that. Thank you very much.
My name is Rebecca Anding.
Howdy.
I've lived in Cobb County for a long time, since 1976, and I love the county. I live here by choice, and I think that Cobb County is becoming the county that everyone's looking to now because of our Braves Stadium. Now, we've got the soccer team here, and I think it's important that we continue to make Cobb County look like the good people that we really are. I've been doing animal rescue in the Atlanta area since 1996, and if you want to ask who sees the ugliest of what happens when people chain their pets, ask people that work at animal control. They see some of the worst of the worst, and truly, if you're going to have a pet, you shouldn't have a pet if you can't afford it. It's a luxury. It's not a necessity. Same with kids. People have them, they don't take care of them, and it's a shame that we have to legislate how people take care of their pets because you think when you're an adult that you should know. People don't know. And I have two pictures. I don't know if you can show them or if I can show them. There's this picture. This first picture is a Great Dane who was six months old and kept on a chain, and she was one of the first cruelty cases that they prosecuted in Clayton County, and she was emaciated like you can't imagine. This is what happens when we put dogs on chains because it doesn't, it's not a priority any longer, and cruelty is neglect. It's all kinds of horrible things, and I'd like to see our county be better than all the other counties and set the standard because we can do this. It's not about policing our neighbors. It's about you see something, you say something. I've got one more picture.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm not real technical. This is another dog that I tried to intervene. It's a little 12-pound terrier that the people insisted on keeping on a chain. They had six dogs in their yard on chains, and no matter what, they didn't want to give the dog up because it's their dog. That was one of the two dead dogs on the property. She's still attached to a chain. She's not going to run off, but this is what happens. People put their dog on the chain. You know, if you're going to vacuum, put the dog in the bathroom, close the door, give them a Benadryl. Who runs your life? You or your dog? You've got to be the guardian of the dog. I mean, you really do. You have to be the guardian. So I want to put a stop to this kind of stuff because we're better than this in Cobb County.
All right. Well, thank you.
We don't want this in Cobb County.
I appreciate it.
We really don't.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Haley Bass. I live in Binings, right by SunTrust Park. I volunteer with Atlanta Lab Rescue, and I'm a critical care registered nurse at Kennesaw. Proverbs 31:8 tells us, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those being crushed." And that is what we're here for tonight. It's my belief that God has entrusted us as human beings to care for His precious creations who in turn take care of us. We are the voice of those dogs who desperately need our help, who desperately need your help. And so when the easy thing to do is to turn your head and look the other way, please look at us, look into the eyes of these helpless animals, and do the right thing because it is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
My name is Joy Kramer. I live in Smyrna, and the comment earlier about Mr. Hankerson and as one county, I really appreciate that because I am part of one of the cities, and it makes a difference that you guys all care about what happens to all of our residents in Cobb County. Tonight, I just want to say thank you so much. This is a thousand percent improvement over what we talked about a few weeks ago, and I just want to quote just some quick points from the Humane Society of the United States, which is also here this evening. Anti-tethering laws are good for law enforcement. They provide clear boundaries and set expectations for pet owners. It's good for animals. Dogs are social beings but can become aggressive when tethered. They're also exposed to extreme weather and potential strangulation. It's good for the community because dogs that are tethered can be excessive barkers, and they are almost three times more likely to bark. So if they do happen to get off that tether, they're more likely to bark than other animals. And enforcement penalties actually provide a revenue stream to the county, so repetitive penalties are, for repeater offenders, can provide a new revenue stream. Lastly, I want to say with respect to the previous comments in regards to the vagueness of the law, in traffic, a yellow light is deliberately vague, but there is a system for redress if you get a ticket for running that light, and it is up to the courts to decide whether you were truly cleaning the bathroom with bleach or if you were truly abusing your dog. So I appreciate you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Mary Gorley. I also live at Smyrna, just outside the city of Le Mans in the county. We've been in our house about 30 years. We've always had a dog. Our dog has never spent a night outside. He is... We put him on a cable during the day for, it's a 30-foot cable, that gives him space to get around our yard, still keeps him well away from the streets. We put him out there because he loves to be out there. He can get to the door to come back in anytime he wants to. Like I said, never out there when it's too hot. He likes the cold, so I can't say he's out there when it's not cold. But also, I am worried about the, when you say he'll have to be with the dog. We, I, he is never outside when we're not there. We keep an eye on him. We make sure that we know where he is, make sure there's no other dogs running around loose that can cause trouble, and it would be punishment to our dog if we couldn't let him be outside when he wants to be. I don't think there's, should be a law saying we can't put him out there for a couple hours if that's where he wants to be and we're there to watch him. Even if I'm not outside, I'm still watching him. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Ray, and I live in Smyrna also, and I have a dog, and I've had my dog for seven years, and my dog is very well taken care of, and my dog also is outside on a cable, and it's for recreation, recreational purposes. I walk my dog every day, and I take very good care of my dog, and I too agree that it would be unhinderous to my dog when she can't come outside for recreational purposes. She's not out there sleeping outside, she's not neglected or anything such as that, but it's just simply for recreation. She's not on a chain, she's not being abused or anything such as that, but she just loves to be outside. So I just think that it would be great if, you know, some kind of suggestion could be made as to where, okay, maybe you can leave him outside for a certain amount of time, which we do anyway. We don't leave our dog out to be overheated or freezing cold or anything such as that. She just loves to go outside for recreational purposes, and that's a convenience for her and I, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Cobb County Commissioners, members here in attendance. My name is John Galsinski, and I reside in the 11th District, which is Marietta, and as you well know politically. I'm concerned with the proposed ordinance of Part One, Official Code of Cobb County, Georgia, Chapter 10, Animals, Article One in general. Section 10 through 11, Proposed Amendments, specifically Control of Animal, 10-11. In particular, A, General Control, 2C, which proposes, quote, "It shall be unlawful for any owner of a dog to chain, tie, fasten, or otherwise tether a dog to a stationary object or pulley as a means of confinement, except that the dog may temporarily be confined by a tether while attended by its owner, notwithstanding subsections 2A and 2B of this section." My objection begins with the fact that no harm is shown or claimed that somehow the proposed ordinance attempts to address. The burden is on the proposer in taking our freedoms, rights, and properties away from us. Today, I had called several of the dog business places in Cobb County, that is, in Acworth, in Kennesaw, Marietta, and Smyrna. In all of the places that I had called, which are businesses, only one of them had a question regarding the nature of this change. The rest of them disagreed and thought that this would be, it would be an interference to property rights of the people as well as their business. The Republican Party certainly makes it a hallmark of the Republican Party to sustain businesses, and as such, I urge panel members who are fellow Republicans in that regard. I have prepared several other things, however, given the fact that it's been cut to three minutes from what my understanding was of five minutes to speak, what I would like to do is submit by way of either a paper or an email or something to that effect regarding the, it's more formal, by way of content relating to this, if the Board of Commissioners...
Thank you, sir. That's your time.
...would consider this. Thank you much.
Hello. Tim Smith, Acworth. My wife and I run a nonprofit that helps local rescues here in the community, and I just, the only thing I want to say first off is thank you for the revisions that you're considering and to address the concerns that's being spoken here in opposition. I think people need to put things in perspective that if this does pass, this isn't going to be a policed state where, you know, people are driving around and looking in your yard and staring at you and going to turn you in. These are for extreme circumstances, giving us teeth when we call to report somebody who is obviously neglecting and abusing their dog. The people who are concerned about their dog being on a tether while they are cleaning or doing something out in their yard or washing their car, who is going to call animal control on you? Keep it in perspective. Thank you.
My name is Linda Hunt, and I'm a Cobb County resident living off Barnes Mill Road. Since I've come before you with complaints previously, I want to thank all of you tonight, especially Commissioner Weatherford and Cupid for taking the time to get this tethering ordinance right, for the animals especially. I've spoken with Captain Owens, and it will be difficult to enforce this law, nearly impossible, he says. That's why I ask all the Commissioners to consider including information on animal control in your town hall meetings and the Board of Directors' meetings monthly. Animal control alone cannot enforce this ordinance. It's up to the citizens of Cobb County to speak up when they see an animal left outside on a tether or in the yard without proper shelter, food, or water. Ask them to call, ask them to make a call to animal control, give them the phone number to call, and when animal control is open, ask them to consider speaking with their neighbor and seeing if they can do anything. I know this is utopian thinking, but in order to make things right for the animals, the citizens must speak up. The call to animal control can be anonymous. These are living, breathing beings, not slabs of concrete or miles of plantings. Please don't let this be the last time the Board of Commissioners think or speak about the plight of animals living in less than adequate conditions in Cobb County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Berger, and I'm your State Representative with the Humane Society of the United States. I'm not a Cobb County resident, but I've had, I want to thank you all so much for considering this and for being a model for the state of Georgia. Many of the other metropolitan, many of the other metro counties do have tethering ordinances, and you all are addressing this correctly by making it without the exception of time because that is impossible for your team to enforce. But there are some really good points made here tonight, which are, number one, this is not meant to be punitive. Number two, this is a tool in the toolbox to have better concern, to have better care for the animals in your community and public safety. I haven't heard much conversation about public safety, but if you look at the statistics of most of the serious dog bites that injure our children and our citizens, many times, I believe the statistic is two out of three, those are animals that were chained and not socialized. So there's a lot more here. Even if the animals are not your top priority, this is good for the community. And most of all, what I'd like to say is that, going back to that young, the nice man who HUHA? What does that stand for? Help Us Help Animals? That was great. This is not meant to punish people. This is, first of all, I imagine you're going to offer a transition time in that your animal control officers will have an educational period where they'll give, they're not going to walk up to people and punish them, they're going to say, "Did you know there's a new law?" And also, there are many grants right now available and many new groups cropping up that are helping people who can't afford a fence. So those people, if you have an animal and you can't afford to put up a fence, there will be many resources, and that could be part of the educational, and I just want to let you all know, a lot of people here know how to get in touch with me, or I'll send you all an email. We're happy to be a resource and help you make this transition and commend you for being such a progressive county in so many ways, and this is another step in your progress. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And do me a favor. Would you let our animal control and our public safety know those organizations with the grants?
I will, and we've had very good interactions with your animal control. They've even hosted a law enforcement training here. You have a very good animal control.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I did not come planned to, prepared to speak tonight, wasn't planning on it, but then I'm-
You're here now.
Okay, so bear with me, and I was listening to some of the reasons-
Have your name and roughly where you live?
Bruce Banks. I live in Cobb County, ever since I moved to Atlanta in '82. I've had dogs for every year, 56 years of my life. Only time I've ever needed to tether a dog was when we went on a picnic and didn't want the dog running off around the park. These reasons for tethering a dog are just rationalizations generally, I think. I have a neighbor that doesn't have a fence. He keeps a dog in his house, comes home at night, lets him out. I let him out during the day. It's, yeah, I think it would be nice to see Cobb County lead the way in this. And I mean, at the end of the day, it's not about constitutional rights, or property rights, or freedom. That's nonsense. You're not, you don't have a freedom or a right to abuse an animal, and it's abuse. And if the law is not definitive, and the old law as it stands now is vague, if it's not more definitive and clear, it opens doors to abuse. And really, at the end of the day, it's just about compassion for another living thing. That's it. And I hope you folks will do the right thing here on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm sure you know me by now, but my name's Andrea Miller. I'm the one that started Cobb County Animal Alliance and actually brought this to the attention of Captain Owens and you all. Apparently, this issue is incredibly important and was overdue for the attention brought to update this law. Please remember what we are wanting to change, which is mistreatment of canines, and that includes tethering. Thank you for your change, and know that these changes are for the betterment of us all and of course, our wonderful Cobb County. We brought this to the attention of the Commissioners because legal cruelty was being executed daily. Having to live day in and out next to seeing emaciated and neglected tethered canines totally pushed me over the edge and brought me to fight for these voiceless creatures. We aren't here to target those who genuinely do love their canines and care for them and treat them well. These ordinance changes are to bring justice to those canines who are living in a daily hell. As I said before, with the strong support and attendance and clout in the individuals who have spoken, this is something that has been needing changed for a while now, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I just have something quick to say. My name is Lindsay Moss Frangie and I live in Acworth.
Just let us know. What's your name?
Lindsay Moss Frangie and I live in Acworth.
Sure.
And bad things happen to tethered dogs. I don't know if you've heard the case of some teenagers who thought it would be fun to cut the ears off a dog that was tethered. They were unsupervised. The dog bled profusely and died in the backyard. They get wrapped up in the tether. They have their feet amputated because they got wrapped up in the chains. So there are bigger things and bigger issues to deal with. Safety issues with children. If these dogs are chained and not socialized, and they break off that chain, they are going to attack a child. That's why you have to pass this. It's important. Thank you.
Do you want to make a comment Dana? Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that, does anybody else wish to approach the podium with this issue? Okay, I now declare this public hearing closed. And I believe we're now going to bring this to a vote. Is that correct?
You are right, sir, yes.
Okay, so I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to revise the ordinance regarding tethered animals as revised and state it in the agenda tonight. We have a second. And now, I know we're going to have some discussion here, so I'll just sort of go down the table here. Commissioner Hunt?
I think everything's been said.
Okay. Commissioner Burrow?
I would just like to say that I appreciate all the input and public comments on this over the past couple months when we've been addressing this. I think Ms. Hunt and the gentleman with the HUHA shirt in the back, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, I think y'all made it very clear that you're going to have to be our eyes and ears in the community. We don't have the resources through animal control or public safety to patrol and find homes that are tethering, unsupervised. So we are going to rely on you to be our eyes and ears and call animal control and report it. And I can assure you, it will be investigated and addressed when you call, just like a code enforcement complaint or anything else. But thanks for your persistence.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to everyone that spoke today. It's been a work in progress and I think we've come to a good solution. The takeaways I had from the public speaking is this is not meant to be punitive, but for those rare cases, hopefully rare cases where abuse occurs, not for those that are washing their car, doing whatever they want and tether for short periods of time that under control and they love their animals. So I would urge all of you, as Commissioner Burrow said, to look for those, but specifically look for those that are being abused, and not for those that do care for their animals and they're taking care of them and doing it in a humane and correct way.
Commissioner Cupid?
Just want to thank those who've come to our commission meetings to apprise us of your concerns with respect to tethering. I have been fortunate to help sponsor this, and I am myself, I don't- I don't have an animal. I don't have a dog. So this is not because I have any personal attachment to this matter, but what I am attached to is ensuring that our citizens have a voice when they do have a concern. And so it was important for us to at least provide a platform to hear what those concerns were. And I must share that you have been convincing and letting us know that we could play a better role with respect to animal control here in Cobb County. So I appreciate everything that you've done to educate all of us, to educate me with respect to this matter. I do know that we do have some loose ends with respect to providing education, I think that was shared by one of our speakers today, to make sure that they are, that our public is aware that we have a new ordinance, and we've had some discussions about that internally, and I'm going to ask for our Community Development Director to address this. And also, with that education, for there to be a grace period for people to come into compliance, as again, this is not meant to be punitive, but to help us better reach our goals with respect to how we address animals within our county. So thank you, and again, it's great to see the level of support for this ordinance.
Okay. I'd like Andrea and Mary to come to the podium. I want Andrea and Mary to come to the podium. All right. Back in January, these were the only two people that spoke to this issue. And I want to tell you, and I've been saying this for months now, this board listens. These two ladies came to this hearing and started what's going to be, what you're going to get tonight. And I'll be quite, I'll be quite honest with you, I have a dog. He's the first dog of Cobb County, all right? But I thought that what they said made sense.
Thank you.
It was that simple. They were articulate, and for once, Mary was brief, all right? But she made sense, as you know, they got a point. So I asked Dana and Community Development to look in revising the ordinance. And let me show you what's come out of this. First of all, if you had ever told me that Commissioner Weatherford and Commissioner Cupid were co-sponsor a bill, I would have jumped off the Empire State Building. But these two Commissioners right here took this amendment and they ran with it. And I'll tell you what else happened. Normally, we have a public hearing, we hear it one month, and then we come back the next month and we vote on it. That didn't happen this time, because the first time around, not only did Andrea and Mary bring, you know, make their point like, no, what you have isn't good enough, they brought other people and they created the public weight that we need to hear and interest. And tonight, we're a product of that community investment in democracy. It does pay to stand up and say something. It does. And I'll tell you right now, what pushed me to decide that we need to vote this was the issues that you brought up one night about tethered dogs being subject to coyotes. All right? And we have a coyote issue problem in Cobb County, as we do in the metro area. So we're already tying these dogs literally with their feet behind their back, because they don't have, it's not a fair fight anymore. So that was a part to me that convinced me. But also, Mary and I have had some very, let's put it as we say in the editorial parlance, frank discussions over time, but that's what it takes if you believe in what you're standing for. Our job is to listen to you and do the best we can to create an ordinance that we can find enforceable, which is what the board's been saying tonight, is as much as we'd like to go a little bit farther, we have to write an ordinance that does not burden our public safety with something that is unenforceable. And what we can do tonight is enforceable with a partnership with the county.
Right.
So my hat's off to you two ladies.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much for all you've done. And with that, I'm going to call the question. And passes five to zero. Let me, um, let me see, let me see. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Right here, right here, right these guy right here, okay? How long is the next section going to take?
Depends on the number of speakers.
Okay, do we have any speakers for the next public hearing on fire prevention codes? All right, so let's do that one, since I don't see any, and then we're going to go into a recess for a short period, all right? We'll do- All right. All right Dana, the last, the last code in public hearing.
Item number three under the Public Hearings for Community Development, sir, is the first public hearing to solicit input on proposed amendments to Chapter 54 Fire Prevention and Protection Code, Chapter 62, the Health and Sanitation Code, and Chapter 122, which is the Utilities Code. Getting right into the ordinance changes, Section 54-3 and 54-50 are being altered. 54-50 is being struck. 54-3 is assimilating the language of most of 54-50, but this is changing to cover the article, is being changed to cover the entire chapter rather than just the article as it relates to penalties for fire safety compliance failures. The next section is 54-51. This is to clarify construction types regarding the requirements for approval of plans by the Cobb County Fire Marshal's Office. Again, that's 54-51. The next section is 54-96. This just removes duplicate requirements that existed in the fire sprinkler activation verbiage, sir. 54-100 deals with the definition of a fire action plan. This particular section adds a component to requirements where new fire alarm systems would need to be equipped with a means to verify the cause of the alarm to help understanding what caused that activation to begin with. Section 54-101 deals with the fire alarm certification requirements, and this is really an opportunity to provide an alternative method of compliance for our contractors to help in admitting the safety codes. 54-102 is to amend the requirements to inspect or silence fire alarms. This language is to clarify the intent that, as it relates to the process for inspections and the silencing of those particular items. 54-104, this one deals with matching the current business practices within the Fire Marshal's Office with the current chapter requirements. We did hear from a couple of board members about some concerns with some of the language on this, and the Fire Marshal's Office will be getting with the County Attorney's Office in order to provide some alternatives to some of the language that we heard some concerns with in our previous work session on this item, Mr. Chairman. 62-33 deals with the Health and Sanitation. These are the rules for the Board of Health, and basically what they're doing here is they're taking out the date specifics and they're putting in as amended from time to time, so that as the state updates their particular rules, those would be simultaneously updated here with the county, since the Board of Health is a state agency, sir. And last, but never not least, sir, is Chapter 122-152 in the Utilities Section. This deals with the water systems and master meters, and basically some language is being removed that has been determined to be unnecessary as it relates to the managing of master meters. With that, sir, there will be an additional public hearing on May 23rd in this room at 7:00 PM, and after that meeting, the Board may take action on any of the codes that are presented by staff in this particular code package.
Okay, with that, and now declare this public meeting open. We have a hearing tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so anyone who'd like to approach the podium on this issue? Does anyone like to approach the podium on this issue? If not, I declare this public hearing to a close. And thank you very much Dana, and we will adjourn until 9:20. A recess, recess until 9:20. And if anybody would take their seats please, going to call this meeting back into, back to order. And we're going to go to tab number nine, right? No, we're not. We're going to go to tab number 10. And tonight, we have a number of public speakers, right Ms. Dance?
Yes, you have 12.
All right.
Minus one.
Minus one, okay.
Okay, the first speaker is David Birkenbain. If you'd come forward.
So what we're going to do again is if you're a speaker, just keep your seat and we'll call you forward, and that way you can relax, you know, and not block the view of the speaker, so. You can come forward David, you're always welcome, you know that.
I didn't know you heard me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Commissioner, David Birkenbain, Medical Burn Ban. I know y'all are listening to me. You've heard me. I appreciate it. I'm still beating the bushes and trying to get at all these people that are in the thousand, you know, have their thousand-foot radius on a medical burn ban. But just a food for thought, when we were talking about grandfathering stuff in, let's go back to 2006, when a medical burn ban started. Let's go back to 2007, when it got amended. Let's go back to 2016, after I started speaking, it got amended again. We're doing all those amendments just for this one thing, outdoor burn pits and all this stuff. I mean, we keep amending it, seems like every year. But if we're going to grandfather it in, let's grandfather in a medical burn ban back to 2006, when Fire Marshal or Fire Chief Dillinger put it into play as a good purpose. Like I say, there's 42 still in the county, and I'm getting the most of them. I'm supposed to have two speakers tonight with me, but one day I'll get the people behind me and hopefully y'all stand up and listen. We had an incident this weekend where my neighbor that has a medical burn ban, the person was burning, it was the 15th. And they have stories of calling 911, and she had one to where they told her not to call 911, and I wish she would be here, to call the non-emergency 911. Well, there's nowhere in the Fire Marshal deal that says call the alternate number. It says call 911. So the 911 people ought to learn what they're supposed to do, as far as I'm concerned. But I called 911- But I called 911 and I gave her all this information. How'd you get that information? I said, well, it's a long story. I'm fighting for the medical burn ban in Cobb County, and you go to your GPS on your deal and you see all these little red circles. I said, every little red circle's a thousand foot, and in that thousand foot, there's an address. So I've been sitting down, printing out maps, taking my protractor and finding that address within that thousand foot, because it's going to be the center of it. Is it your burn ban? No, it isn't. They're burning in a medical burn ban. So as a public citizen, I should be able to call this in if I know there's a medical burn ban in my area, without being drilled and grilled, which I didn't take offense to. Uh, gave her my name, gave her my number, gave her my address if the fire department wanted to speak. And not only that, it was the weekend of the, I believe the 15th, and the wind was gusting to 20, 25 miles an hour, and you can't burn in over 10 miles an hour. You can call McCallum Airport, they get to reading there, they get to reading from Charlie Brown Airport, and even, you know, you could see the wind blowing, because it would blow, you know, just blow it on around, and it was on an unsafe condition, too. But, uh, I appreciate y'all's patience. We'll slowly get there. And Mapleton's looking good, we got a dumpster out there on that, on that one building out there.
You're welcome.
I said, thank you. And she said, the man was out of country. I said, out of the country for two years? I'd like to do that. I said, that's what I need to do. And they're taking care of pile drive, the people, the police have gone down there and putting those stickers on the windshield, uh, that are in right away, and, uh, we're looking at maybe getting the property owners that are renting these squatters of these, import-export businesses, uh, get involved on who they're renting to and how they're taking care of their conditions down there. And one more thing, uh, Bankhead, Bankhead Highway is the first highway that runs from Washington DC all the way to San Francisco, and we changed Bankhead Highway going through Mapleton because of Bankhead Courts, because of drugs. Well, we don't have Bankhead Courts anymore. Why can't we either have a little yellow sign that they have Bankhead Highway and, have it as part of our, you know, our history? I mean, we're connected, we're connected to the East Coast, they were the West Coast.
Okay. Is Destiny still back there? I want you on television here. What is, what is, is, um, is it a legitimate 911 call to call about a, uh, a burn ban?
Typically would be, I would have to look into his particular situation.
No, I'm not just saying, I'm just, just for my information and for the people in the audience, so if somebody calls 911, uh, and says they have, you know, they think there's a burn ban and it's not being enforced, that'd be a legitimate call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure about that, because I'm sure, look, it's not a perfect world, David. Uh, I know we do the best we can, we probably get 999,000 calls right, and every now and then, something gets misinterpreted, so, uh, I'm sure Destiny will take care of this no problem.
We just transfer, you know, information back and forth.
Yeah, right. Just want to make sure, I know we're doing the right thing, but I also like to make sure that, you know, we work for you, all of us do here, and also make sure that if you have any questions, Destiny'd be happy to answer them for you, okay?
I appreciate everything y'all do.
Okay, thanks, David. Thanks, Destiny.
The next speaker is Tamara Feliciano.
Good evening, Commissioners. I want to first apologize for picking today to do this, but, um, I am an attorney, I live in Fulton County, but I practice in Cobb County, and I represent many of your residents, and I'm proud to represent those residents. And most of those residents...
I need to have your name.
I'm sorry, Tamara Feliciano.
There you go, no problem, because we're going to write you a letter saying thank you for coming.
I represent countless consumers in Cobb County and throughout the state of Georgia who have been defrauded by Petland and its franchisees, including Petland Kennesaw here in Cobb County. And those consumers always come to me with the same question, and that's how? How is this allowed to happen in my community? Why wouldn't my government protect me from them, from this, is what they're asking me? And what I quickly realize is I could sue all the pet stores in the world and get relief from some of these consumers, but I'm never going to be able to protect those future consumers. And so that became my call to action. And last November, Attorney Boris Melter, my co-counsel, Karen Paul, and myself met with Dana Johnson, and we proposed a pet shop ordinance prohibiting the sale of dogs and cats. We met with Dana Johnson, and he told us that he would run it by Captain Owens and the county attorney, and get back to me, and he did. Um, and I have to mention that Dana Johnson and Captain Owens are wonderful representatives of the community, I think they were very, they listened very well. But Captain Owens contacted me in January, and he said that because Commissioner Boyce had just taken office, they wanted to push this to a public hearing later in the year, and he told me to check back in March. But in between that conversation and March, HB 144 dropped, and as you know, that was a House bill that was supposed to address the retail sale of dogs and cats and regulate it. And Mr., or Captain Owens contacted me and said that they would be pushing that back hearing that issue until after HB 144 was decided one way or another. And so once session ended, I reached back out to Mr. Johnson, and he told me something that kind of surprised me a little bit. He told me that the county felt it was a state issue, or the county was being advised that it was a state issue, and that we would need two commissioners to sponsor the ordinance. So what I'm here for today is to implore two commissioners at least to sponsor this ordinance. And, um, as, as I mentioned, HB 144 was supposed to be a consumer puppy protection law, and its sponsor, Earl Earhart, said something very important, I think it kind of resonated with me, and he kept saying that, you know, this is something the state had been discussing for many, many years, and many, many sessions, and it's never passed through. Um, and this session was no different. So what that tells me is that the state is deferring to the local government to make this decision and to hear its constituents. And the problem that's happening is if the state is deferring to the local government, and the local government is deferring to the state, in the middle is your consumer protection and your animal protection that's getting lost. And so I really am imploring you to take a look at this issue and sponsor this ordinance. And I believe that the government closest to the people governs best, and I think Cobb County can best govern this issue, because you can hear from all of your constituents about how this issue affects them. Some of them are here today to tell you exactly that. And, and I think that, you know, the issue becomes about, you know, Petland Kennesaw is your main, is your main pet store here, and I'm, I know that the commission, I'm sure, has seen news media articles about Petland Kennesaw, and what I can tell you is they're all true. I brought with me a binder today, and I hope that you will look through this binder and see that the evidence shows predatory lending, inhumane sourcing, USDA violations endlessly, meaningless warranties, and I could tell you that they're meaningless as an attorney, shell corporations. If a consumer wants to sue Petland Kennesaw, good luck. It took me two years to figure out who their operating corporation is, and I guarantee you that a consumer's not going to find out that information very quickly. And they've been the subject of multiple investigations, so I, I heard you talk earlier about, this is something that the community is interested in, this is something that's worth discussion. I do not, there have been several false claims about what pet shops ordinances do. They do not put, they do not put businesses out of business. There's a local pet shop owner here today to tell you that. They require humane sourcing. It says, the false claim has been made that pet shop ordinances will prevent consumers from buying a breed of their choice, but you guys have...
Thank you, ma'am, that's your time.
Let me say a couple things before we go anywhere. First of all, you're looking at the five people that set policy for this county. If we didn't sign that letter, then it isn't policy. All right?
I'm sorry, what letter?
We said that it was the policy that we didn't get engaged with the state issue.
Oh, that was just an email.
All right, what doesn't matter, unless you got the email from one of us, that's not policy, all right? So there's only five people in this county who set policy, and you're looking at them. Secondly, uh, the way things happen in this county, and I'm just saying that, it's just really simple, uh, we call, we call it walking the halls, where four of us are located along one hallway, and then, uh, I'm isolated on the other end of the hallway. What I would, what I would recommend is that you call, uh, and work with the board members, all right? Get an appointment with them. Just start with any one of them, all right? And their executive assistants will set up an appointment with them, they're happy to do that, we're very open. As you know, we listen to the public, and we're very, we're willing to probably, not probably, we're willing to listen to your, to your case, and then if you can find the two commissioners, uh, there's no problem making an agenda item. And I've made it very clear to everybody here that I'm happy to be the second board member all the time, because in the old days, they had to have two people besides the chairman. No, uh, if one other commissioner here wants to make an agenda item, I'm always going to be the second vote. It's that simple in the Cobb County. So what I recommend you to do is make an appointment, just alphabetically, one way or the other, and bring your case to one of them, all right? And see if you can find a board member that will work with you, and if that's the case, then I'll be your second, and we'll put it, make an agenda item. I'm not promising you an outcome of any kind, but I will commit you to, for, is that we will make an agenda item, where it will be brought before the people and the board, and you'll hear the case. Does that, does that work for you?
Yes, I was just, I, yes, I was just needed clarification, because the, we had originally reached out to Commissioner, um, and then we were sent to Dana Johnson, so I just wasn't sure how to reengage.
Sure, no...
And I certainly didn't want to take up your office hours if it's something that...
No, no, you're not taking, all right, we worked for you. We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not being paid by the hour, okay? And they're grateful for that. Uh, but the bottom line is, is that we're well aware of the HB bill, all right? And that was the right approach, let's, there's no sense getting out in front of the state...
Absolutely.
If they're going to address that, but they're in a recess now, and we meet through the whole year, so just like I said, just make an appointment with the one of the commissioners until you find your one. When you find your one, you've got your two. Uh, if you want to find more than two, that means you've got three, that's a pretty good chance you might get something to happen, all right?
Thank you.
So, I just want you to know that.
And do you recommend I leave this, or...
No, you can, sure, absolutely, just leave it with the county clerk here, and she'll get it to us.
I've got five copies of the ordinance.
Absolutely, no problem. We're happy to do it.
This is the only copy that I've submitted electronically. Thank you.
No, you're certainly welcome.
The next speaker is Karen Paul, if you'd come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Karen Paul. I, um, live off Bell's Ferry. Uh, I've actually emailed all of you multiple times, trying to actually arrange meetings with you guys to speak further upon this issue. I'm here tonight to hopefully encourage correspondence between us in order to find those sponsors. How do you put three years of work into a few minutes is, you know, very hard to do, but there's a specific need for this here in our community because of public concern and consumer protection. For over two years now, I have been working to help consumers and pets in Georgia after what I personally experienced in a very prolific pet store within this county. I worked in the pet industry for over 10 years, so I was already aware of the reputation of this particular store, but when I made a personal visit to the store, I was astonished at what I saw. Finally, I realized two years ago, something had to be done, after I witnessed a Great Dane on the sales floor, under incredible distress due to medical conditions that had not been addressed or attended to. In fact, I was so concerned, I approached every single employee within that store, and they either ignored me or tried to sell me the dog, because the dog was on the sales floor, available to the public. I visited that store for the next, Petland Kennesaw, for the next three days, to see if he would ever get the medical attention he so needed, and in fact, he never did till after he was purchased by an unsuspecting consumer, who later confirmed what I had feared was happening. Multiple visits afterwards showed animals with injuries or illness offered for sale to unsuspecting consumers. I then started a Facebook page to start to raise awareness about the actions and activities of the store, while reaching consumers who I knew needed help, in hopes of creating legislative, legislation for change. I began to personally investigate this store, and what I uncovered was truly alarming and sometimes personally horrifying. Animals were being sold that were sick to consumers, sometimes so sick they ended up dying shortly after purchase. Animals would be on the sales floor that would appear to need in middle of medical attention what would be offered for sale to the public. Employees and staff were misleading and deceiving the public and consumers on a variety of issues, and allegedly participating in consumer fraud. It became apparent that the owners of Petland were allegedly illegally treating consumers and store pets within their own homes, under no supervision of a veterinarian. Petland was supporting some of the most inhumane breeding facilities in the nation, but continued to tell the consumers and public that they only supported the best of the best. But paperwork and documents told a horrifyingly different story. And as this personal investigation progressed, and I became more involved with somehow holding this pet store accountable, I began to witness more and more disturbing trends of animals' disappearings, pets dying, employees lying, and Petland doing anything and everything to stop what I was exposing and to prohibit the truth from coming out. I will never forget a small puppy named Giant. He died horribly. To go into detail of what happened would take too long to explain the depths of travesty that happened right before a major holiday. He died a horrible death because Petland lied. He was diagnosed with parvo shortly after a consumer purchased him. The preferred vet of Petland Kennesaw at the time, Dr. Waller, went to such lengths to hide how this pet died, that when the owner and I went to retrieve the body of Giant, he had removed all the organs from the body, so that a proper necropsy could be deterred. They continued to deny that Giant died from parvo after two other highly recognized veterinarians proved he had died from this contagious illness. This is just one of many heartbreaking experiences due to the actions and activities of this location. This community needs you to support this, so that this doesn't continue to happen. There are counties and cities across the country who have also passed similar successful ordinances because of these issues. These are serious things that are happening here in our community. Serious allegations of consumer fraud by hundreds of local consumers here in Cobb County. Serious allegations of what employees and owners are doing to these consumers. Last year, this particular location hired in-store an attorney, a pet store. They will bully, threaten anyone who tries to speak out about what is going on internally within this store.
Thank you, ma'am, that's your time.
Thank you.
Wait one second, we don't go anywhere. You just, you keep saying Kennesaw, I want to make sure it's in the county thing here.
It is in Cobb County, and you guys do have, you can take action by doing an ordinance, this is so serious. Um, you know, I've been doing this for three years, trying to expose this.
Is Captain Owens here? How about public safety? There you go. All right, come on, hey, Skipper, come on up here for a second, would you?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure you know about this case, the Petland store.
Petland Kennesaw?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so why don't you give me a rundown as to where we are on this?
We are not doing anything with Petland.
And that's because, there's no violation of an ordinance, or...
The state's been looking into the store, looking into business.
The state has been, right? Yeah, why don't you come up here to the front here, I'm just, just so we all understand where we are here.
I didn't hit a whole question, sir, so...
Well, you obviously know about the Petland issue, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, is, and you're telling me this is a state issue because it's a state, oh, regulated industry?
Right, the state is regulating those, the animals there at the facility, they come in and have investigated...
They come in and have investigators come in and check.
Okay.
The county has not done anything to regulate that business at all.
So it's not violating any county ordinance, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Not currently unless we change.
So the issue right now is between the state and this business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Tamara, could you come back up here for a second, please? Yeah, all right, so, I just want to make this very brief here because we're, you know, obviously, we have some other speakers. You've obviously gone to the state.
I've gone to the state multiple times.
Okay.
The state issued a quarantine, a temporary quarantine one time.
Okay.
The state ordered or didn't order, but told Petland Kennesaw to stop treating, told the owners of Petland Kennesaw to stop providing consumers with in-home vet care.
Okay.
Those are the only two actions, otherwise the state has disputed the findings of UGA. In the particular case Karen Paul was talking about, that was a case of parvovirus. The state disputed the findings of parvovirus despite the fact that the necropsy was performed by UGA.
All right, well, then that goes back to what I'm saying, since we don't have an ordinance right now, if you're trying to, trying to generate one, you're going to have to do what I call to walk the halls, all right? So, because we're very, you know, we, we stay out of other people's legal lanes for a lot of reasons.
Sure.
And I know Deborah Dance is giving me the look right now to make sure I don't say anymore. But, but you see where we are right now.
Yes.
We can enforce something and if we don't have an ordinance, and if it's, if, if higher authority supersedes our authority, which is the case of the state, we got to be very, very careful here.
Absolutely, that's why we're just asking that you consider the ordinance.
All right, but I appreciate both your comments and statements.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Yes.
Petland, is it a franchise business?
It is, it's a Petland, it's a franchisee of Petland. Your Cobb County Petland actually is one of the, is like kind of the nucleus of the corporation. And we're seeing the same issues widespread throughout the franchise. And I am preparing a class action lawsuit, so.
Okay, with you, okay, so you're asking us to take action for Kennesaw, which would impact all Petland organizations?
No, 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 no.
Just the one in Kennesaw?
Of course, yeah, it would just prohibit the sale of dogs and cats in Cobb County. At pet shops, but not...
Okay, so Petland would still operate in jurisdictions outside of Cobb and be able to sell and operate under similar, there's a similar strategy.
Correct, in fact, the owners of Petland Kennesaw own a store in Sarasota, a Petland franchise in Sarasota, and Sarasota just passed the same ordinance, so.
All right, well that, we're gonna, we're gonna stay out of this legal issue right now, but I'll be, get your point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Owens.
The next speaker is Deborah Berger.
Me again, just, okay, I want to just talk to a different aspect of what they're bringing up. And, and yes, they will walk the halls and I'll be more than happy to come with them. As Humane Society of the United States, we do a lot of investigations. And to add to the files, I want to let you know that we did an investigation of pet stores in Georgia. And of course, Petland Kennesaw, we have found some infractions there for sure. But I wanted to talk to you about something that I think is probably very important to y'all as commissioners, which is business. I want to emphasize that over 200, I believe it right now that counts at about 220 cities have passed this bill. And the reason, passed this ordinance, and the reason why you're entitled to pass this ordinance is Cobb County is paying for animal control. You guys are paying for the overpopulation of animals in your county and it's very expensive. So you should have the right to regulate how many animals are sold in your county. This will not affect people buying from independent breeders. This will only be a ban on, this would only be a ban on the retail sales of pets from, that are commercially bred. It is not anti-business. And here's a couple of interesting facts, and I want to, I'm going to add this to the file, too. The pet industry is one of the fastest growing business, industries, it is an enormous business. 24 of the top 25 businesses do not sell puppies. They sell pet supplies, they sell all kinds of things, and they are making millions and millions of dollars. This is not an anti-business move to consider this ordinance, and I'm going to leave this, 24 of the 25. And through this process, I've learned something very interesting. There are 77 Petlands in this country, 12 of them don't sell pets. 12 of them exist, so Petland would not even have to go out of business if this happened. They just have to change their business model. So we're not asking, when we talk about this ordinance, it's not an anti-business. It's, it's, it's changing to a more progressive model. And you guys showed tonight that this is a progressive county, so I think y'all can do this. And again, we are available, I'm available, Tamara's available, Karen's available to answer any specific questions and we will come see you. But I just wanted to emphasize that point, that we're not trying to, that these ordinances are not anti-business ordinances. And thank you again for all your consideration, y'all, y'all are really wonderful.
The next speaker is Regina Ryan.
Hello, this is my first rodeo with something like this, so bear with me. My name is Regina Ryan and I am the owner of a pet store here in Kennesaw. It's a pet supply and nutrition business, and I've been in business for over seven years. The truth is that there were quite a few years that I was in business that I had been hearing and seeing things with my own eyes about this situation. And I opted to stay quiet. I felt like because of the location of this store to mine, because the truth is, we do have a very similar business without the selling of the pets. I thought professionally, it was probably the best thing to do is just not say anything. Eventually, I could not do that anymore, I had to say something, and my question was, what can I do to help? So, having said that, I am here in the capacity to be witness to the countless dogs and their humans. And I'm, I'm sorry, I know this is not an emotional, it's not supposed to be an emotional conversation here, but when you see this over and over, these people come through my front door begging for help for their pets. Overwhelmingly, they have, they all have one thing in common. These dogs have all been purchased from the Petland in Kennesaw. I'm not here to advocate putting someone out of business at all. I am here only to advocate removing the unethical part of that business. Yes, there are many levels to this debate. It's no secret where most of these animals and these puppies come from before landing at Petland. And that is a debate in itself. But when I am one independent store, seeing a pattern of sick dogs and broken-hearted people for over seven years coming from the same situation, this is a problem, and it's a real problem. The words, "We will replace the puppy if anything happens," might be their way to guarantee a sale, but these puppies are not cars. They are breathing, living entities that people hope to include as part of their family. When these puppies die prematurely, or the family is burdened financially with chronically ill pet that they love, how does someone warrant a replacement policy or option? They don't, they don't want these puppies replaced. They want the puppy they fell in love with to be healthy and live its deserved life. My business does not sell animals, it does not need to. There are many options, responsible options available to businesses like mine, which can facilitate increased revenues. We have the responsibility to show our humanity and compassion for the animals that have such great purpose. We are their voice. It would be a great injustice to turn a blind eye on this irresponsible and unethical actions of a few, namely this Petland here in Kennesaw. We all have a responsibility to be part of the problem and not part of the solution. Or, I'm sorry, part of the, solution and not part of the problem. So I'm asking for your support here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Barnes.
Okay, my name is Amy Barnes, I'm from Marietta, Georgia, y'all know me already. Something very interesting happened today. I had to flush my water for 27 minutes. For a second there, I thought I had flushed water. I called in to find out they were flushing the fire hydrants. And I also found out that I was not notified of this happening prior to when I needed a shower. So if there's any way that we could be notified that our water is going to be impacted by something like flushing, that would be awesome. The other thing is, when, when we, we see ordinances that are passed, okay, and I can understand tonight's ordinance after talking to plenty of people, it would be nice to see it in writing, that this is not intended to be punitive. It would be very nice to see in writing an offer made to all the citizens of Cobb to please make a neighbor aware of the fencing charities or the fencing nonprofits. That's something I would absolutely donate to. So if we could see this olive branch being offered throughout the county, that would make me feel so much better. And, and that would truly be a service of the people. For example, I see newsletters coming out into the email, and thank God for that. I appreciate the communications from the commissioners. This is an essential method of communications. It would be really neat to see a newsletter insert about how fences can be had, about alternatives to chaining and tethering. Because if there was an olive branch, I fully support that. I, I do thank this county for being very communicative. I love the electronic newsletters that I get and I subscribe to several of you guys. So again, I thank you for your efforts. And some additional communication from the water department would be very much appreciated. I like my showers clean.
Hey Steve, are you there? So, is it, Amy, do you live in Marietta or in Cobb County?
That would be Marietta and unincorporated Cobb.
So you live in unincorporated Cobb County?
Yeah, yeah, it's Cobb County Water Department.
You don't live in Marietta City?
No, 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 I'm like one street away from that.
Okay, and so I'm just curious, that's a good question, just, I'm sure we, we get it right most of the time. But when we flush the system, does it has an impact on, on houses? Yeah, come on up, yeah, yeah, it's a good question.
Fire hydrants get flushed both by the fire department and by us.
Oh, okay.
In our case, most of the time we do flushing, it's after a, a replacement project or something like that.
Sure, right.
In which case we have signs up.
Okay.
Fire department, I believe, tends to be more of a, open the fire hydrants one at a time as they go through a neighborhood.
Sure, okay.
It could have been either one of us.
Okay.
We, we try to give notice when we, when we can, and I don't know what happened in this particular situation.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks, appreciate it, thanks Amy, please bring it up. Okay, next speaker?
Okay, that concludes the first six.
Okay.
There are six more.
Yeah, keep coming, absolutely, yeah.
Do you want to consolidate? Okay, the next speaker is Tracy Dever.
Hi, my name is Tracy Dever, I live in your county in Acworth, Kennesaw-Acworth line. And I am here tonight to, for this dog, to implore you to please sponsor this ordinance. I was an unsuspecting Petland customer, and this dog had to be put down after her second birthday. I'm sorry. I just don't want this, what I went through to, for other people unsuspectingly to go through this pain and acne. And it is not about recovering any of the money or any of that. It's about the fact that I purchased this dog unsuspectingly, thinking that this dog was going to live out its life with me and everything that we had to go through afterwards. And my lawyer Tamara is here tonight, and she has been helping me at no fee. And we are trying to, we are putting together a class action lawsuit against them. And I just really, it's, for me, it's about justice and shutting down the part of their business that is unethical. It, I, I, that's all I wanted to say. And just to please ask you to sponsor this ordinance or to please move forward with an ordinance that would help people, unsuspecting people like myself, fall victim to this kind of horrible, horrible cruelty to the animals and to the customers. Thank you.
The next speaker is Judith Frieh, or Freeh. It's Judith and the last name is spelled F-R-I-E-H. The next speaker is Frank Savini.
I just want to acknowledge that Frank agreed to turn in his sheets, which we have. So I want to acknowledge your sheets.
Thank you. I am Frank Savini, I'm the president of the Cobb County Civic Coalition, and I'll be very brief. I did turn in some sheets to Bob. I understand the, the board will be addressing OSC. In our last meeting, we actually adopted a proposal, so all we wanted to do is to share our thoughts on OSC as you delve through and make improvements to it. So for the sake of time, I will hand out these other sheets and thank you for your time and thank you for all you do.
I can assure you Frank, we're, this OSC sheet has gone right to the top. We're working the process right now of getting an agenda item. All OSCs that have been applied for are still active, but we need to have, take a hard look at that. I know Dana is looking at the ordinances for the summer, so we're, we're taking some action in that regard real soon.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Norm Fag.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Norm Fag, I live in Cobb County and I represent the Cobb Parks Coalition. And I'm here to first and foremost, thank all of you for the issuance of the partial parks bond. And to ask you, is it yet for sale?
Is what for sale?
The parks bond.
Yes, it is, it's been issued. Yes, it's been issued, right Bill? The parks bond's been issued, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I was just curious. I want to say that also that we look forward to the remainder being funded in some way as the referendum mandated $40 million worth of land for parks, thus fully restoring the county's honor in this matter. And we are also asking that the board provide an update on the progress of the parks bond at the meetings. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're in the process of, we've, we've approached the owners. And we've given them our offers, and now they have a time period to consider the offer and then come back to us. So, you know, we'd like to let everybody have an appropriate period of time to, to consider our offers. The bottom line is though, is that once, once we have an appraisal, we can't go above that appraisal. So there's some, there's some negotiation, but there is a limit to the negotiation. And of course, as we have a number of properties, this is going to take a little bit. But we're actively working with the owners of the property, trying to come to an agreement on the, on our selections. And of course, those that accept our offers, those that don't accept our offers means that we're going to have to go back down our list some more and continue to find properties to refund the full initial allotment, which is about $27 million.
Have you all had a chance to put on your thinking caps and try and figure a way to fund the additional 14 million?
Well, I've made it very clear, Norm, that, that I can't handle it next year because I made a commitment not to raise taxes, except to fund this initial bond, okay? And then in 2019, I'll work forward to honoring my commitment for the remainder of the $40 million. Because it's going to have to come from either the general fund or somewhere. But we made, we made it very clear, although some don't agree with us, that we can only fund about $27 million out of that $40 million right now. So I'm still committed to finding $13 million for the remainder of the bond somewhere during my four years in office.
Okay.
I'm on record as saying that, you, you got me on video, you got me in Word, all right? I got to work for the board, but I hear you. I haven't forgotten you.
Well, we, we do appreciate the, the 27 million being, being funded. That's great progress over, as opposed to the nothing that happened in the previous eight years.
Well, as soon as, as the property owners, you agree to our negotiations, you know, then we can, we'll release that information... we can release that information as to who's agreed to our proposed offer. But right now, the property owners and the commissioners are still working with them. I can assure you, we're actively working on those properties that we've nominated for the first twenty-seven million dollars.
Great news. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Mary Gorley. Mary Gorley. The final speaker is Cynthia Ray. Cynthia Ray. I believe both of those individuals may have already spoken.
Let's go to tab number eleven. And that was, let's see here, this consent agenda, okay? What's up? What can I say? All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. I got a second, any discussion?
Yes.
And we have a comment for Commissioner Rot?
Yes, I will be voting for the consent agenda, but we'll be voting against, or I would like the record to show that I'm voting no on number eight.
So that on the consent agenda, Commissioner Rot will be voting no on number eight. Any other comments from the board? With that, I'll call the question, and it passes five to zero. All right, let's go to tab number twelve. And Mr. Wilgus, I believe you're back.
Good evening again, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. We've got a long agenda tonight. Our first agenda item is to approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for thoroughfare improvements on Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest Road, Audrey Church Road. Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest, Audrey Church Road is an approved thoroughfare improvement project in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The department is in receipt of a construction agreement from GDOT for the Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest Road, Audrey Church Road project. Under the terms of the agreement, the state will fund eligible construction costs up to a maximum amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-six cents. The county will be responsible for funding a hundred percent of any construction costs exceeding the state's maximum. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for thoroughfare improvements on Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest Road, Audrey Church Road, and authorize a payment of a construction administration fee in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve as presented, well needed.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, and it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our second agenda item is to approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., for thoroughfare improvements on Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest Road, Audrey Church Road. Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest, Audrey Church Road is an approved thoroughfare improvement project in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-six from Baldwin Paving Company was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The scheduled completion date for the project is two-hundred-and-seventy consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-six for thoroughfare improvements on Cobb Parkway at Cedar Crest Road, Audrey Church Road.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our third agenda item is to approve project number X-2214 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with Exolair Construction for drainage system improvements on Cahaly Drive. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred from Exolair Construction was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is thirty consecutive calendar days from issuance of notice perceived. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X-2214 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with Exolair Construction in an amount not to exceed ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred for drainage system improvements on Cahaly Drive.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question, and it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our fourth agenda item is to approve project number X-2225 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with WE Contracting Company, Inc., for drainage system improvements on Glenn Place at Lucinda Place. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-two from WE Contracting, Inc., was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of one-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-two in roadway cost and thirty thousand in water system cost. The completion date for this project is forty-five consecutive calendar days from the issuance of notice perceived. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X-2225 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with WE Contracting Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-two for drainage system improvements on Glenn Place at Lucinda Place.
Commissioner Cupid?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, and it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number five is to approve a supplemental agreement, supplemental agreement number one to the resurfacing contract 2017-1, countywide major thoroughfares, local maintenance improvement grant with Baldwin Paving Company for the resurfacing of two county-maintained fire station parking lots. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The department is in receipt, receipt of a request from the Fire and Emergency Services to resurfacing the parking lots for Fire Station Number Six and Fire Station Number Twenty-Four. This includes required pavement markings, installation of an eight-foot concrete dumpster pad at each location. Fire and Emergency Services agreed to fund this request. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the resurfacing contract 2017-1, countywide major thoroughfares, local maintenance improvement grant with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed fifty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine for the resurfacing of two county-maintained fire station parking lots.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our sixth item is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a FY-17 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for Safety Action Projects. The department has received a Safety Action Projects request from the Georgia Department of Transportation to provide a list of potential projects eligible for funding assistance available through the FY-17 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution authorizing the submission of a FY-17 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program application to the Georgia Department of Transportation in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five for Safety Action Projects.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve, sir, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our seventh item is to approve project number X-2517-TO, hashtag O-1, to the 2016 Master Task Order with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for Traffic Engineering Study along Holly Springs Road. Planning Studies is an approved project in the Traffic Management, Traffic Signal Timing and Planning Component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X-2517-TO, number O-1, to the 2016 Master Task Order contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty for Traffic Engineering Study along Holly Springs Road.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve. And discussion?
Sure.
We did have a public information update on this, on a couple of other, just the two and three projects. We got a lot of feedback and comments and suggestions on locating Holly Springs' proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
So what we're doing is taking another look and
Expanding the project to the Post Oak-Trit and Holly Springs intersection.
With this study, we are, yes, ma'am.
So this will be a new study and additional project. So I just want to make those comments because a lot of people that attended are wondering what happened to their comments. So we're revisiting this with, I guess, an expansion of the project component. That's all.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our eighth item is to approve project number E-7580-TO, number 101, to the 2016 Master Task Order contract with Reynolds Smith &amp; Hills, Inc., for engineering design of Gordon Combs Road sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number E-7580-TO, number 101, to the 2016 Master Task Order contract with Reynolds Smith &amp; Hills, Inc., in an amount not to exceed ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty for engineering design of Gordon Combs Road sidewalk.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve, sir.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our ninth item is to approve preliminary engineering agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., for preliminary engineering at Old Highway, Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad. Old Highway Forty-One Bridge, Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project for the city of Marietta. The project will require review and approval of final engineering design plans and other related construction documents by CSX Transportation, Inc. The cost for the preliminary engineering review services will be in an amount not to exceed seventeen-thousand-six-hundred. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a preliminary engineering agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., in an amount not to exceed seventeen-thousand-six-hundred for preliminary engineering of Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our tenth item is to approve preliminary engineering agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., for preliminary engineering of Paces Ferry Road sidewalk at CSX. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. This project will review, will require review approval of final engineering design plans and other related construction documents by CSX Transportation, Inc. The cost for the preliminary engineering review services will be in an amount not to exceed twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a preliminary engineering agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred for preliminary engineering of Paces Ferry Road sidewalk at CSX.
Commissioner Rot?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our eleventh item is to approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Little Willio Road over Timber Ridge Branch. Little Willio Road over Timber Ridge Branch, previously identified as Willio Creek, is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of this project will require Georgia Power Company to remove and relocate their existing facilities. Since the facilities may be located on Georgia Power Company's easement, and the cost for the relocation in an amount not to exceed forty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten may be reimbursable by Cobb County. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed forty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Little Willio Road over Timber Ridge Branch.
Commissioner Rot?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. The next several items involve grant submissions. The item number twelve is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for construction of Mabelton Parkway pedestrian improvements. The department requests authorization to submit a grant to the ARC in an amount not to exceed four million dollars for Mabelton Parkway pedestrian improvements. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for construction of Mabelton Parkway improvement programs from Factory Shoals Road to the Chattahoochee River.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number thirteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for engineering design of Mabelton Parkway pedestrian improvements. The department requests authorization to submit a grant application to the ARC in an amount not to exceed five-hundred thousand for Mabelton Parkway pedestrian improvements. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for engineering design of Mabelton Parkway pedestrian improvements from Veterans Memorial Highway to Factory Shoals Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Pass, pass. You want to comment?
Yeah, but clarifying question.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. The scope of this project, and, you know, I'm remiss in not being careful with this because I've seen this so many times, but the scope of this project is to be Mabelton Parkway between Veterans Memorial and Factory Shoals or to Lee Industrial?
This one is to Factory Shoals.
So what would be the sidewalk between Factory Shoals and Lee Industrial? What would be the?
Between that and the Chattahoochee River?
Yeah.
Is it a ten-foot sidewalk on one and a five-foot sidewalk on the other?
So the grant would just cover to Factory Shoals, and then the county would cover the additional?
All right, the difference between the two grants, the one between Factory Shoals and the Chattahoochee River, the grant that we're requesting there is for construction, the grant that we're requesting from Veterans Memorial to Factory Shoals is for the design.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, you call the question?
You already did.
I think, no, we're going to, we're going to, I thought that was a discussion period. Well, let's unvote it. I'm just kidding, we're not going to unvote it. I'm getting the look from Commissioner Cupid, we're not going to do that. Next.
All right, thank you, sir.
Dig me out of this hole.
Agenda item number fourteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for preliminary engineering design of Cobb Parkway at Barrett Parkway grade separation. The purpose of this project is to reduce the vehicular travel delay along Cobb Parkway and Barrett Parkway in the project's vicinity. This location has been identified as the number one non-interstate bottleneck in the town center area. The department requests authorization to submit a grant application to the ARC in an amount not to exceed five-hundred thousand for Cobb Parkway and Barrett Parkway grade separations. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for preliminary engineering design of Cobb Parkway at Barrett Parkway grade separation.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number fifteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for preliminary engineering design of Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road grade separation. The purpose of this project is to reduce the vehicular travel delay along Cobb Parkway and Wendy Hill Road in the project's vicinity. This location has been identified as the number one non-interstate bottleneck in the Cumberland area. The department requests authorization to submit a grant application to the ARC in an amount not to exceed five-hundred thousand for Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road grade separation. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for preliminary engineering design of Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road grade separation.
Commissioner Rot?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number sixteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for construction of South Barrett Reliever Phase Three. The project, the purpose of this project, along with Phase One and Phase Two, is to provide mobility and congestion relief along Barrett Parkway. The project will provide an alternative route to the public traveling, the highly developed office and commercial areas of I-75, as well as those motors accessing I-75 at Barrett Parkway. The development requests authorization to submit a grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission in an amount not to exceed thirteen-million-fifty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-nine for South Barrett Reliever Phase Three. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for construction of South Barrett Reliever Phase Three.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve, and this is another partnership with the Town Center CID.
Yes, ma'am.
Has been on hold for a while. One is complete, Barrett Reliever Two is under construction, and this will be the third phase.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a second, any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number seventeen is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for proposed CobbLink Saturday service modifications and addition of Sunday service. CobbLink currently provides local bus service on Saturday, but does not provide Sunday service. Coblink currently provides local bus service on Saturday, but does not provide Sunday service. In recent passenger satisfaction surveys, coblink passengers have consistently requested Sunday service to better meet their transportation needs. The department requests authorization to submit a grant application to the ARC in an amount not to exceed $6,800,000 for operating costs associated with proposed coblink Saturday service modifications and addition of Sunday service over a four-year period. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a transportation improvement program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for proposed coblink Saturday service modifications and addition of Sunday service.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, Chairman. This item has been a long time coming, and I'm pleased to support this item, as well as many members of our community, including our employers, who I've had some communication with, and they're happy that their employees will have an opportunity to be able to use transit to get to work on Sunday. So with that, I move to support this item.
Second. And with a comment, this is to request funding for the $6 million project?
6.8.
I'm sorry?
This is to request funding.
This is to request $6.8 million in funding over four years.
Right.
For the operation of Saturday and Sunday.
For Saturday and Sunday service. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
And just to be clear, our part of that would be about 350 annually, correct?
That's correct.
If we get the grant.
That's correct. 340,000.
Right, that's pretty close.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, call a question. And it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is item number 18. It is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a transportation improvement program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commissioner, Commission for West Atlanta Street Trail. West Atlanta Street Trail is a proposed project in the sidewalks component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The department requests authorization to submit a grant application to the ARC in a total amount not to exceed $2,195,000 for West Atlanta Street Trail. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a transportation improvement program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for preliminary engineering, acquisition of required right of ways, and construction of the West Atlanta Street Trail.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question, and it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jim. Going on to tab 13, and Public Services. Hello, Helen.
Yes. Chairman, Commissioner, County Manager. The library's agenda is to approve the contract for Biblioteca for Radio Frequency Identification System, or RFID, in the Cobb County Library System, an identified project in the 2011 SPOS Program. On February 23rd, 2016, the Board of Commissioners authorized the appropriation of excess revenue collections from the 2011 SPOS Program, included in the approved appropriation in the amount of 1.5 million for the RFID project. The RFID system combines security with more efficient tracking and handling of materials throughout the library, including easier and faster checkout and check-in of library materials, credit debit capability, and real-time circulation statistics and reports. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Biblioteca in the amount of $1,429,761.70 for the RFID project in the Cobb County Library System, a 2011 SPOS Project, in a form substantially similar to that provided under separate cover and as approved by the County Attorney's Office. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Um, motion to approve. With pleasure.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's, that's all of 13. On to 14. And hello, Eddie.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This evening, we have one item. Dr. Gullig and I ask that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract for professional design services with Piper O'Brien-Her Architects Incorporated in the amount of $156,427 for the new medical examiner's laboratory facility. This is an approved capital improvement project in the 2016 SPOS Program. We ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transfers and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents. Piper O'Brien will provide for us facility needs assessment and bridging documents, architect site assessments on three different sites that we've chosen, hospital and medical consultant of what will go into the facility, and the cost estimating to build and furnish the new medical examiner's facility.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, and this is just beginning, and hopefully we'll get this going, and we can move forward with modernizing our facilities. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going on to tab 15, and Community Development.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here to present to you a request to adopt an annexation response per our House Bill 49 intergovernmental agreement for property, which is 5.941 acres, by the city of Acworth, on some unaddressed properties on Baker Road. As a bit of background, House Bill 49 is an intergovernmental agreement, there is a land use component to it, which provides a framework on how annexations are reviewed by the county and then approved by the cities. There is also a land use dispute resolution process that is required through this intergovernmental agreement and through state code when the cities and the counties don't agree. This is a picture of the subject parcel showing where it is located on Baker Road, completely surrounded by the city on three sides and Cherokee County to the north. Showing a little more detail about where we are here, there is a 5.39 unit per acre development to the right of the proposed annexation, as well as a distribution center to the west, commercial properties to the south. This property is low-density residential in our future leaners category, it's currently zoned R-20. If rezoned by the city of Acworth, it'll be in their senior living community residential district, and this will include 92 independent senior living apartments with amenities. This is an objectionable request through our House Bill, through our agreements, but in light of the surrounding properties that are contained in the area, staff and the district commissioner have issued a notice of non-objection, which the commissioners have signed off on. With that, I'd ask the whole board to please confirm what has occurred in regard to this particular annexation.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion approved, sir, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. And it passes five to zero. Thanks, Dana.
Thanks, sir.
All right, on to tab 16. So, get high on my breath. Yeah, I gotta get, all right. I'm gonna read a couple of recommended announcements here that I'm going to seek board approval on. I'm pleased, I'm pleased tonight to announce, present a recommendation from the county manager, Mr. Hankerson, for Mr. William Volkman to be appointed to the position of Finance Director and Comptroller. Mr. Volkman has served 12 years of the Finance Department and Assistant Comptroller since 2012. And I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appointment of William Volkman as Finance Director and Comptroller effective April 25th, 2017.
Second.
No discussion? Call a question. And with a great deal of pleasure, I announce it passes five to zero. Now get to work. Congratulations, Bill. The second, and the second one, again, I'm pleased to present a recommendation from the county manager, Mr. Hankerson, for the creation of the Emergency Management Department under the Department of Public Safety, and the appointment of Cassie Maslum as the Emergency Management Director. Ms. Maslum has served 16 years with the county, first as a police officer, for seven years before moving to Emergency Management in 2008, where she has served as a deputy director since 2012. And with that, I move that the Board authorize the creation of the Emergency Management Department under the Department of Public Safety, authorize the appointment of Cassie Maslum as the Emergency Management Director, grade 60, effective April 24th, 2017, and further approve all subsequent accounting, payroll, and budgetary transactions associated with this departmental realignment.
Second.
Call a question. And with a pleasure, I announce it passes five to zero. Congratulations, Cassie.
Stand up.
Okay, the last, I'd like to recommend the interim appointment of county manager and a transition plan for the county manager's responsibility. Mr. Hankerson has submitted his notice to retire as of April 30th, 2017. However, Mr. Hankerson has committed to be available to the county on as an entity basis through the adoption of the fiscal year 18 budget. I'm also pleased to recommend, to present a recommendation for Mr. Robert Hosack to be appointed as the interim county manager effective May 1st, 2017. Mr. Hosack has worked for the county for 27 years, and most recently as the Community Development Director, before he retired in August of 2015. And with that, I recommend that the Board approve the appointment of Mr. Robert L. Hosack as interim county manager effective May 1st, 2017, and authorize me to set an interim salary and negotiate an employment contract with Mr. Hosack for the Board of Commissioners approval, and further authorize the engagement of Mr. David Hankerson as a consultant effective June 1st, 2017, at the rate we negotiated pursuant to professional service agreement in form of acceptable to the county attorney.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? With that, I call a question. Passes five to zero.
Stand up.
Mr. Hosack?
Stand up.
Would the worst-kept secret in the history of Cobb County please come to the front? Please go to the podium, and I just simply want to say that you have, to say you have some big shoes to fill is an understatement. We're delighted to have you onboard. You have an incredible legacy to fulfill and continue with the presence of Mr. Hankerson. I'm delighted to see that you two will be working in partnership through an unspecified time in the future, but we want to welcome you, welcome your years of experience with the county, and we look forward to the product that you, Mr. Hankerson, produced until he departs to his, to his future employment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I wanted to acknowledge
Please.
Mr. Hankerson. Don't think I really ever would have got to this position without working with him for 27 years, and I just also, one, would like to congratulate Mr. Hankerson, but, two, I think it's a testimony that he's willing to stay behind, and he's doing it simply because he knows it's the right thing, and that's the way that Mr. Hankerson has always operated, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hankerson.
Thank you for your kind words, and again, congratulations. And then the final tab, I believe, is 18. Hope I'm right about this, except for the Commissioner's comments, of course. Okay, so my, I would like to move to appoint Carmen Hughes to the Hospital Authority of Cobb County for a term ballot to expire on August 7th, 2020. This appointment will replace Ms. Nancy Arnold. Do you hear a second? I have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. And it passes five to zero. And next, I'd like to announce the reappointment of Roseanne Hall to the Housing Authority of Cobb County for a five-year term to expire on April 30th, 2020. Commissioner Cur, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Burrow. I spoke out of turn here, that's actually Commissioner Burrow's appointment, and I'll let her continue with the rest of them.
Okay, I would like to approve the reappointment of Roseanne Hall to the Housing Authority of Cobb County, and also to approve the reappointment of Nathan Wade to the Recreation and Parks Board.
Second.
We have to them separate?
Oh, we have a motion to approve? Approve, call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay. Now I'm going to announce the appointment of Loriele Green to the Property Advisory Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31st, 2020. This appointment replaces Mr. Bill Hilli. And then I'd like to, I'd like to have you announce the next one. You do the next one.
As one of my appointments to the Transit Advisory Board, I'd like to announce the reappointment of Sherri Newton to the Transit System Advisory Board.
Okay, thank you.
No vote required.
No vote required, that's absolutely correct. With that, I believe we have the business done for tonight, and now I'll just go to Commissioner's comments. So I'll start with Commissioner Otte tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have three for the folks in East Cobb. The food truck Monday that was scheduled for this past Monday that was postponed due to the weather, it is on May 1st from 5 to 8. You can come have some, I'm not sure what Happy Belly is, but that's what they're serving, and Maine lobster and some other great food. Also, just want to do a shout-out to some of our great employees, Donald Wells, Tanisha Bates, and Kim Rousseau, that spent some time with one of the folks from District 2, and she, Angel Brim wrote me a letter just making sure that I knew that they had spent a lot of time working with her. And then finally, want to congratulate the Walton Chamber Music Society for their performance at the Midwest Band and Orchestra Clinic, which was in Chicago.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burrow?
Thank you, sir. I'd first like to thank all the business owners and citizens that attended the How to Do Business with Cobb seminar. Special thank you to Cobb County Purchasing, Cobb County School System, and all the county staff for continuing to work with our vendors and seeking opportunities for new business and small businesses to do business with the county. Tomorrow night, at the Sprayberry Chick-fil-A at Sandy Plains and Piedmont, Chick-fil-A is sponsoring a spirit night to raise money for the family that was, whose house was destroyed with the plane crash that occurred on Vista Wood Drive. Norm and Barbara Keller are the owners, and they were at church when the crash occurred. They lost their home, and all their possessions in this tragic event. Sprayberry High School Chick-fil-A at Sandy Plains and Piedmont will host a fundraiser to donate to the Kellers tomorrow night, Wednesday, April 26th, from 5 to 8. And 10% of the proceeds from that evening will go to the Kellers. So we ask that you come out and support this event, and we're very grateful to Chick-fil-A for their generosity and support and the community. On April 30th, Sunday, at 8:00 a.m. at Kennesaw State University, 390 Big Shanty Road, you can come and be a part of the Semper Five. Okay. We have two Marines up here, y'all need to get out and run, to celebrate the life of Lance Corporal Marine Skip Wells. His mom wants his memory to live on, not only for his heroic death, but for the fun life he led. Join Kathy Wells and the rest of the family to celebrate his birthday and his love for America. You can register at tortoiseandthehairracing.com, and proceeds will benefit the Lance Corporal Skip Wells Foundation. On May 13th, at Cobb County Animal Shelter, is Captain Owen still here? Where did he leave? He left. We'll have our next Forever Fest from 10 to 4. Come to the animal shelter at 1060 Al Bishop Drive and take home your new best friend. And on May 18th, Zaxby's at Sandy Plains, on Sandy Plains Road, will be hosting a fundraiser for the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program that we started last year, and their proceeds will be going to will be going to provide supplies, pet supplies, for the dogs that are adopted from the animal shelter in partnership with our Superior Pet Program. And that's May eighteenth, Thursday, May eighteenth, and theirs is all day from ten thirty AM to ten PM.
It's like our meetings.
Yeah. And last but not least, on June the tenth, the Northeast Cobb Business Association is sponsoring their third annual Five K Nine, Saturday, June tenth, at eight AM. This year's race proceeds will be used to support a service dog for an autistic child. To register as a runner or a sponsor, visit northeastcobbba.com. Thank you all.
Do you have anything?
No, just a big congratulations to all the county employees and directors, and best wishes to the County Manager.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Sir. Oh, is it my turn?
It's your turn.
I was taking a nap. I apologize. Wanted to recognize Cobb Fire and Emergency Services earned their third international reaccreditation status. Congratulations to our fire department. This is the second award in the last six months when we received the ISO rating of one, so second to none, Cobb Public Safety and Cobb Fire, so thank you for all that you do there. We've talked about Mr. Hankerson a lot tonight, and on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at the Cobb County Safety Village named after him, will be a reception from nine to eleven. It's a drop-in. Bring food, money, and anything else that you might think, clothes, since he's now retired and unemployed for a while, so. Hand good. So that's from nine to eleven, and stop by and say thank you for all you've done for this county. That's an opportunity. And finally, Cobb Safety Village will have a Family Fun Safety Day this Saturday, April twenty-ninth, from nine to one PM on Saturday, so take advantage of that, and it'll be a good event for all. And any other items, please see my newsletter or all other Commissioners' newsletters. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. Just quite briefly, our Congressman David Scott will have his annual job fair on Friday, April twenty-eighth, from ten AM to three PM at the Georgia International Convention Center, and included with that will be a small business forum from nine AM to two PM. Also, our Cobb County Police Athletic League will hold a free soccer camp for children ages eight through seventeen, and that will be at Traymore Park off of East West Connector on May eighth through the ninth, and the time is from six to eight PM, and you can register at facebook.com backslash CobbPAO, which is Cobb P-A-O, or you can register at cobbcounty.org backslash PAO. Also want to give some recognition to the weekly cleanup events that we've been having in South Cobb, and want to thank Barry Krebs for his efforts. He's both a member of South Cobb Lions, which has been an integral part of our cleanup events in the county, as well as a part of Keep Cobb Beautiful. This weekend, they had a cleanup event with Vinings Village Civic Group and the Vinings Rotary Group. If you're interested in having a weekly cleanup near you, just contact our District Four Commissioner's Office. Finally, we have a couple of road maintenance and paving projects throughout the district. Want to inform the residents who live off of Hyrum Lithia Springs that there will be an active road repaving this week from nine AM to four PM, and to expect some delays as the roads will be narrowed to one lane. Also, we are going to have another road closure on Veterans Memorial Bridge, and that will be Friday, this Friday, the twenty-eighth, at eight PM through Monday, May first, until five AM. I just want you to be aware that we'll have a detour and plan to take additional time to go through that area. Those are all the comments I have tonight, besides saying again, congratulations on your retirement, Manager Hankerson.
And I just simply want to, first of all, thank Commissioners Cupid and Weatherford for the skillful way they handled the tethering issue. It was a very sensitive issue, and I thought that the outcome was a result of you working with the staff and coming up with the right words, so thank you for both of you. I also want to thank Mr. Hankerson. I know there just sometimes aren't enough words, but I think that, you know, in the short time we've worked together, we've had a lot of fun, and I hope that you go out with laughter in your heart, and, but you know you leave a legacy here that this will reflect your county for decades to come because of what you have done with the board over that time. So thank you again for all you've done, and Godspeed. And with that, I declare this meeting in adjournment.
Thank you.